...pastor town for Rag Right. If you're looking for how to gamble, or play blackjack, or anything like that, there's some room over there, so. So everyone's here for the Rag Right Pastor Town meeting, right? Alright. So I'm TJ, Justwood's director of Rag Right. I'd like to officially welcome you and thank you for being part of Rag Right 44. So, thank you for getting up early. What's the earliest someone got up this morning to drive over here? Five o'clock? Five o'clock? What do you got, Doc?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, alright. So, four thirty, alright. Thank you for getting up early. I'll tell you what, this workshop's gonna be worth your time, because when it comes to July, you're gonna be like, "I'm really glad I did that workshop." Learned a lot of good stuff about Rag Right. So, before we kind of kick off, I want to start with just a real quick video that kind of give you an idea of what to expect on Rag Right.
It's not, um, it's not you guys.
You ride Rag Right because it's quiet, it's an event, and for people over age, it makes us shudder.
Rag Right is a Hollywood tradition. Each year, people come from all fifty states and several foreign countries to celebrate the sights, the sounds, the friends, the food, and the hospitality of the friendly people of Iowa.
All kinds of culture here, but we didn't know it was in Iowa.
This is a great way to get to see a state. It all started in nineteen seventy-three. Des Moines Register writer and copy editor John Karras suggested that columnist Donald Call should ride his bicycle across Iowa and write columns about what he saw. Call challenged Karras to join him. They selected a route from Sioux City to Davenport, and with just about a month's notice, they invited a couple to come along. To their surprise, about three hundred riders showed up on the first day. One of them was eighty-three-year-old Clarence Hickred from Yeweenoa. He rode a heavy lady schwinn bicycle and wore a long-sleeved shirt, pants, woolen long underwear, and a silver pith helmet. Hickred quickly became a legend. That first ride was unofficially called the Great Six-Day Bicycle Ride Across Iowa. It was intended to be a one-time event, but the ride and the columns Call and Karras wrote about it generated so much excitement that readers begged the Register to do it again. A tradition was born. The number of riders grew steadily. By the end of the third year, it had become tradition for the ride to begin at the Missouri River so riders could dip their back tire in water, and end at the Mississippi River where they could dip their front tire as a finale. It also became obvious that the ride was here to stay, so it got an official name: Register's Annual Great Bicycle Ride Across Iowa. Rag Right, with the year designated in Roman numerals. Rag Right grew bigger and more popular. Cities and small towns across Iowa lobbied to have the route passed through their community. Today, more than ten thousand riders pass through the streets and highways of Iowa each day of Rag Right. The riders pass through about eight hundred different towns in all of Iowa's ninety-nine counties. Newspapers, magazines, television stations, broadcast networks across the country and the world have featured Rag Right. In recent years, Sports Illustrated listed Rag Right as one of the top ten events ruled by oddity in the world, and National Geographic named Rag Right in its top-ten list of America's Best Adventures.
Oh, it's amazing! I love, I love the positive atmosphere. Yeah, it was the better experience that I've ever done. Every ride is different. It's one you make every day.
Welcome, well. What's happening? Hi, hi, hi.
The people of Iowa and their communities are the true backbone of Rag Right. By the time Rag Right rolls into each town, community volunteers will have worked more than six months to ensure the rider experience is the best it can be. That is what makes Rag Right so special.
You slap, slap the little kids' hands, and talk to the farmers, and pet the pigs, and kiss the baby.
To get into the small towns of Iowa, that's what makes it really worthwhile.
And that's why Rag Right continues to be the oldest, largest, and longest touring bicycle ride in the world.
It's not the corn, it's about the food. We have a real good job in Iowa. Thank you for everything. It's been a wonderful experience.
Everybody should do it at least once, and I think once you go once, you'll probably do it more times. So I'll give you a little snapshot of what the ride's about. On that thumb drive that each town has, that video's on there, so if you go back to your town and you want to show people that video, that's on there, as well as some DVDs and different things like that. I can tell you right now that no picture, or no video, or anything like that can make you understand the massive number of people that are gonna come through your town, okay? So if you've hosted before in recent years, you kind of have an idea of what that crush of people, and it just constantly keeps coming for four hours, and then you're like, "Whew." So no picture in there will prepare you for this, okay? We're gonna try to do our best to get you absolutely ready for everything that you're gonna see that day. So don't be afraid to ask questions along the way. We're gonna give you lots of good information, lots of good presentations, but you ultimately have to decide what's best for your town. So, like the video says, it's the oldest, largest, largest bicycle tour event in the entire world. The next of its kind is probably about one-tenth of what Rag Right is. So this tradition's been going on for forty, forty years. And I think the video does a really good thing about the history, about what Karras and Call started. This little article in the paper is what started that thing in nineteen seventy-three. We're looking right now at honoring Donald and John of Saskatchewan, actually, in Des Moines, because these two gentlemen have done more of the biking throughout the country, throughout the world, than people know. And we want to honor them in a great fashion. We'll talk a little bit more about John, because John still continues to come out on the road each and every year, and he's eighty-six years old. So, so when they started, back with a tradition of a hundred and forty-four riders, has grown to what it is today. Some days, we see over twenty thousand people on the road. So, there's John today. He'll be out on the Carrot Loop for sure, which is his namesake, and we'll talk about that as we go. So, to give you a little idea, we're gonna have to show you a lot of slides. Every one of these slides will be on that thumb drive, so if you want to take a look, and there'll be probably over five hundred photos, and a lot of the things you can say, "Well, that's kind of like our town. Our downtown looks like that, our square looks like that," or, "We don't have any of that," and we'll still show you photos, even if you don't have a square, or if you don't have a downtown, or a nice park, there's still ways to do Rag Right. So we've seen just about every kind of setup, and we'll, we'll make sure that you're gonna be successful that day. So, again, officially welcome. We're gonna do some introductions. As far as the people, Rag Right staff and crew, they're still checking in, people, you met Scott Garner, who will be traveling quite a bit and working with the towns. We also have Jim Green out there, the former Rag Right director, who I took over for in two thousand and three. So probably the last time we've been through some of your towns was in two thousand and three, when Greeny was, was still the director. And also John and Linda are helping out, they're part of our Rag Right crew. But for introductions, what we want to do is hear, you know, what is the name of your town, the size of town, who's here today with you, have you hosted before, and a quick mention about something special about your town, like, "We are the popcorn capital of the world," or whatever that, that, that little thing about your town, what you're known for. So if we get one, one person from each of the towns to do an introduction, we're gonna start over here. Alright. Yeah, of course. Alright, so.
Yeah, right, I think, I think that's your department, Becca.
It's not mine, that's for sure.
I'm from the Chambers, from Essex, Iowa. Our town is roughly eight hundred people. And I've got Jim Dick and Mary Durkey here with me. Essex has been a pastor community twice for Rag Right. Anytime Shannon goes, it's been an overnight town, Essex has been a pastor town.
What do you know for in Essex?
Labor Day weekend is our, our big, um, big celebration, and that's kind of what we love.
Awesome. Okay, welcome. We're just gonna keep walking right down here. What town's up next? Pop up.
I'm Carl Martin from Mystic, Iowa. Our town, about four hundred and twenty-five people. I have Led Me Closets and Neil Smith with me. We have the only steam-minted water tower in the state of Iowa, and on the fourth of July, we help hand-pack the sponsor of the goat races. I'm serious. Any of us, several people.
You said goat. Alright, goat, I said goat races, that's the kind of stuff that people are looking for. See, cool? Goat races, real cool, right?
I'm John Rouse, I'm from Garden Row, Iowa. We're two hundred and eleven people strong. We've been a pass-through town once before. We're known, or noted right, I guess, is we're celebrated a hundred and seventy years. We were founded in eighteen forty-six, and we're having some pressure this summer for that.
Awesome. Alright, thank you.
I'm Mallory Smith from the city of Columbus Junction. We are one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine. We often claim nineteen hundred, because it sounds so much better. And we are probably best known for our swinging bridge, just off of Highway ninety-two, that is one block off of the Rag Right Route.
Jerry Kirk, City of Letts. We're about three hundred and ninety-two, give or take, depends on which neighbors we have set when they move out. We are a hospital town, we love our town. Uh, we're, best thing that we're well-known for is we've got a gentleman married in our little cemetery named William Reddick. He was the sixth, sixth recipient of the Medal of Honor, and first time it's ever given out, so it means a lot to us to have him in our cemetery. So, thank you.
I'm Mike Forlong, this is my son Chad Forlong, we're the owners of Arthur Creek Vineyard and Winery in Muscatine County, with a main address of Letts, Iowa, so it can go either way. Hundred-and-sixty-year-old family farm, Irish township, Muscatine County's known for their watermelon and made-rice sandwiches.
Thank you.
Hi, we're from Diagonal, Iowa. My partner in crime today is Jan Johnston. And Diagonal is very well-known for a one-of-a-kind printing museum. We have the old type press, the line of type, and it still runs with lots of memorabilia from around our area. People who come there tell us it truly is one-of-a-kind, so hopefully we can get a few more to stop and take a look on the Rag Right Route. We have been a pass-through before, it was about fifteen years ago. The size of our town is about three hundred on a good day, and, um, I think that's it. We're ready to be a host and hostess there.
Alright, thank you, Diagonal.
I'm Cora Todd, I'm from Belitska, Iowa. We're a town of about twelve hundred. We have hosted, or we've been a pass-through town several times before. Anytime she starts in Shannon Doa and goes to Creston, we're usually on the route. We're probably best known for the Axe Witter House.
I'm Bob Pedricks, Mayor of Prescott, Iowa. We're known for our Klein Museum, it's one of the largest collections of all the machinery in the state. We're a town of about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty. Rag Right last came through in nineteen ninety-seven, and we're anticipating this visit.
All these Prescotts? Wow. So has anyone left a Prescott name? Alright, speaking over here.
I'm Jason Dent from Homestead, Iowa. I would say our town is about five hundred people, for the most part, and I would say we're probably most known for the Homestead livestock auction there. I was host of the nineteen eighty-five World Championship Livestock Auctioner Contest. I get, get around quite a bit, and I'm like, I'm homestead people, like, "Oh, you have a livestock auction." And we, I don't think we've ever hosted Rag Right before, have we? We've never been anywhere near it.
Eighty-one, it went through.
Yeah.
It went through in eighty-one.
It went through in eighty-one, so, uh, but I guess we're everybody's looking forward to, we're kind of ready to figure it out, so, glad to be here, too.
Thank you, everyone homesteader, alright. So we got Randolph. Who's speaking? Fay?
Fay Branch from Randolph, Iowa. We have Teresa Hardy and Coi La Hunter here also. We are a town of a hundred and sixty-eight people or so, and I have heard that we were a pass-through town. The year, can't quite connect on a year. Well, some say twenty-five years ago, yeah, so. Something about our town, we've been sitting here wondering what that might be. We did have, made national news several years ago for feral cats. And we probably have one of the largest grain storage areas for such a small town, but...
Cats are cool.
And we're special, so.
I was hoping she mentioned the feral cats.
Mike Mott from the Iowa Beer Bus. We are helping out in Plinwood with their beer garden the first night of Rag Right, and, uh, working with a couple of the other small towns on alcohol issues, and, and helping out with vendors and things.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, she quickly pointed. Chad Piper, City of Westchester, Iowa. Population one forty-six, one forty-seven now, I think. City curbs who can't touch in the middle, Steve Lippert, council member, Carroll Hill, some treasurer. I should know that. First time hosting Rag Right, we're gonna do our best, hopefully you're back. We're probably just a small town on the route.
Nope.
You're right in here. One forty-six, we're, we're gonna, that's running one forty-six. I think we ride as small.
I'm Les Schaefer, I'm from Mount Air. Hard up Riggle County, just down the road from Diagonal, I'll meet somebody from Kelleton, just, you'll get to Kelleton when you get done with us. We're on Highway Two. Town's about, I said fifteen hundred, Ken decided to check it, we're at sixteen eighty-nine as of two thousand thirteen. I guess we're maybe known, just not from Mount Air, but Riggle County, known for our astronaut Peggy Whitten, so, um, I don't know if she's scheduled to come and visit that day, but Ken's working on it. We have a nice historic square, the Orff Sea Fisher, the Corn Parade mural is in our post office, which is quite often featured. I think the last time they came through was two thousand and three, the last year Jim was on duty. I guess the other thing that, Air Days is our big thing in Mount Air, which happens to be that weekend right before, so really not sure if this is helping at work, we're all gonna be tired from barbecuing all day, and then getting ready for Rag Right, but we are excited to have you guys come through. We're represented today by our chamber, and our city council, and some of the local bars there in town today.
I know Peggy likes to bike, too, so, dog's heard before, so. Alright, who's up?
Hello, I'm Andy Woodrie, and I took a man to a honeybee resort, and, uh, we have no permanent residents, but we have tens of thousands of people that visit us each year. We're very honored to be part of the Carrot Loop this year, and, uh, Rag Right did come by the first year the resort was open, though before by time, but, uh, it wasn't necessarily a planned stop. And something special, uh, we think that we have to be the greatest destination in Iowa, and we're one of the most sustainable resorts in the Midwest.
Melbourne.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Sayers, and we are from Melbourne, and Kate McGann is with me, Alicia Hagan, and Gary Jones. We're a population of about twelve hundred people, and this is our first time being a pastor town, and we think that we are probably most well-known for auto pushball, so they play that every year around Fourth of July.
Sounds like you might have threw it twice this year.
Yes.
Alright, who's up next?
These guys.
Alright, thanks.
My name's Rebecca Castle, I'm from Imogen. I've got Amy Kelly and Adam Keterik with me. We have about fifty people in town, and...
That's me.
We have never hosted Rag Right before, uh, so we're very excited, uh, we're on the gravel loop, actually. And something special about our town, we have a very, um, rich Irish heritage, so we've got big shamrock painted in the middle of the street, and one bar and one church, Johnny Green, I'll be there.
So which seems more, the bar or the church?
Depends on the night.
You gonna go?
We would do Sam.
Who's over here? Cromwell Church? You want to speak?
I'm from Cromwell Church, Judy Kylie, and this is Sharon Bennett. We haven't been a pass-through town before, and, um, but we've had bikers that's came through. We are well-known for our handballs and our God's Porsha Day, um, and also, we are the highest point between the two rivers. We would have had, we would have been like the major town instead of Creston, but Creston got it because Cromwell didn't have water, so.
History lessons today, alright. Tabor.
Hi, I'm Susan Shepherd from, from Tabor, Iowa, and with me is Jamie Meston and Scott Richardson. We are a town of approximately a thousand and forty people. Our history is, is pretty rich in the Underground Railroad. The founders moved there in eighteen fifty-two, established the town, and were heavily involved in the Underground Railroad. We have at least three places in town that are on the National Historic Registry. The city park was, was, is documented as a location of where John Brown actually trained his troops, and the original home of the Reverend John Todd is still standing and is a museum. In the basement of that home, there was stored two hundred rifles, and those rifles were shipped to Harper's Ferry and used by John Brown in the raid of Harper's Ferry.
Thank you. Cory. Alright, Guy.
I'm Guy Race, Mayor of Corning. Here with our co-director Donna Hogan, and a couple of the community members, Doug and Karen and Cooper. Our community is about sixteen hundred and thirty-five or less, and we've, the community that Johnny Carson was for, and, so Donna's gonna go by his birthplace, and those of her Johnny Carson fans can stop in and see what's going on there. Weekend before, or that weekend, as you come to town, we'll be cleaning up from our annual barbecue auction that we have, there'll be quite a few barbers come to town, so, uh, we'll try to be ready for this, this is our third, uh, that we can remember as, as, we'll be a great community meeting place.
Thank you, Guy. Alright, who wants to speak over here?
I'm Pat Shipley, I'm from Nodway, Mayor of Nodway, Adams County. We have been a pass-through town, I think anytime it's gone through Shannon Doa, well, everyone that went through Stanton, too, well, we didn't stay in Stanton. We've been at least a pass-through twice. I've usually been involved over at Belitska because of my church, but, so I've got a little background there. I'm here by myself today. I Googled, and we have a hundred and eleven. So, my goal is to keep bike riders from being hit by the Burlington Northern Train, because they will have to go over the train crossing to get north of town, and so that's my primary goal. The, I guess whatever we're known for, we're a pleasant place to nod away. And I'm gonna give testimony to Imogen, because they have one of the best St. Patrick's Day events ever, and if you're in that part of town, girls, we should talk that up.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to get this back up here, so you know.
I'm Dean Greiner, I'm here for Woodwill Vineyards. We're one of the four wineries that are on the route this year. Carol is actually the name of the town, but we don't actually go through town. I guess the mystery about our vineyard, it's been the family farm since eighteen fifty. This will be the first time it's actually gone past us, so we're pretty excited to have it, and we're looking forward to a lot of fun that week.
Thanks, Guy.
Hi, I'm Shannon Fries, and I'm with Sean Fries and Donna Richardson. We're here representing our business, Anfons, in the city of Pedrick. We have seven hundred and sixty-four people. Rag Right has been through three times in the last ten years.
There we go.
And we have an annual celebrat- celebration just before you guys get to town, another barbecue day, so most of you, um, we're known for the town bivo. That's about it.
I'm here today representing Roya, Iowa, and I thought that, um, we were a small town, but we have six hundred and sixty-five. And I have Dee Shell with me, and Jackie Richardson. The, um, town is famous for its hospitality, and for being the home of the world-famous Arabian Star. We have been on the Rag Right Route for at least two towns, maybe three, and we're home to the one of two of the restored Al-Bash Bihos in Iowa. And we have two train crossings to go over.
I wanna keep safe, too. Alright, who's speaking at this table here? There you go.
Hi, I'm Tina Major Flue, I represent Elton, Chats, Sarah, and Nikki. We're a town of about three hundred and fifteen people, but most of our people live outside of this, in the country, too, so. Um, we're best known for our ten-time world champion for horseshoes, and I think this is the second time we've been a pass-through town.
Welcome. Alright.
Hi, Larry Bird from Hayesville, Iowa. We're a town of either forty-five or forty-seven. We have had Rag Right pass-through one other time, and, uh, two, a couple of things that were notable about Hayesville, which are gone now. We have one of the, there's two schoolhouses west of the Mississippi, two-story schoolhouses, and it's since came down, it just got to the point where we couldn't keep it any longer. And our bank was one of the largest in the nation. Hayesville Bank was one of the largest in the nation at one time. And, um, halfway between Hayesville and Sigourney is Dumont Museum, which is quite a museum.
Well, I heard Larry Bird was from a small town, so forty-five, that's the smallest, smallest town right now? Alright.
Hi, I'm Amber Kepart from Sigourney. Our town is the size, got two thousand and fifty-nine people, and I have Angie Alderson, Don Northup, Jim Dickinson, Alan Landon, and Larry Alderson here today. We have been an overnight town twice, once in the seventies and the nineties, and we have also been a pass-through town twice. Sigourney's well-known for our Fourth of July celebration, our historical courthouse, and our Lewis Memorial Fountain. And Jim Dickinson.
Alright. Who has a bad ear?
I'm Kevin Walsh with the NS Bush, Nicole Olds, the beer of Rag Right. So, we'll talk to everybody a little later, so thank you.
I'm Jason with Iowa Carlschweber's. I'll be speaking over here in a minute, so if you have any questions, you can just ask.
I'm Dan Schaefer with the Iowa State Patrol. I'll be visiting with you the next year, and in the open session here after lunch, so I look forward to working with all of you this year.
I'm Kyle Lockman.
Alright, I think everyone introduced now. This one, officially thank our, our hosts over here. We got, like I said before, we got Jim Green, who's the retired Rag Right Director. Wait, Jim? Jim lives down in Sun Valley Lake now, so over in his backyard this year. And, and John and Linda, they're from Girdel, they're on the Rag Right crew helping out, so thank you. Thank you for, for helping out. We are gonna go to the breakout of the beverage guard, so if you're, if you're going to the beverage guard breakout, basically through that door, so we'll let everyone that's going to that breakout session come get up and go through that door. Once we kind of get that door closed, we'll start the, the major part of the competition. Is that everyone?
Hey, Jason? Anyone else, anyone else going with you?
I don't know.
Oh, I thought David was.
Well, maybe he is. No, I'm just a little quicker than him, I guess.
Might want, there might be so much, you need two people to keep, keep track of it all. Oh, that's a good idea, too.
Okay, another announcement, if you didn't get a book, if you didn't RSVP, you want a book, and we do have some extra books, so, if you want a book, just go out and see Jim and John over here, and look at you. Yep, I know you.
Glad you guys are going.
Okay, can everyone here okay in the back there? Is that loud enough? Everyone can see okay? A lot of this is gonna be very visual, as far as, as far as the photos. Like I said, you have that thumb drive, at least one for each town, that has these pictures. So if you want to pull them up on your computer, or plug them into a, you know, a TV or something like that, when you get home, you can do that. So we'll let it in until it settles, and we'll close that door in the back, and we'll get started. We close that door in the back. What are you guys in the back? Can we close that? Can you pull that door a little shut? Because we're both speaking, it might be a little, a little rough. Okay, well, let's, let's get started here. It was really neat to kind of go around the room, because we've got all different kinds of towns. We've got towns that are, you know, about 2,000 people, roughly. We've got towns that are, I believe, 45 was the smallest town. No matter what, your size, you get all of Rag Ride that comes to your town, okay? Doesn't matter, they don't discriminate, they're gonna come to your town. Now, if you're on the loop, you'll get less. If you're on the carousel or the gravel loop, you're gonna get less, and you're still gonna get a whole lot of people coming through there. But we're gonna talk about things that are philosophically applied to towns of 45 or towns of 2,000, okay? Throughout this time, if you've got questions, don't be afraid. Hey, TJ, can you go back and talk about that a little bit more, okay? And happy to do it. We're here all day to help you out, to make your town as successful as possible, okay? So like I said, we've been doing this event for 44 years. We've pretty much seen just about every layout and just about every curveball that can be thrown at you. So we're here to give you good examples of what's worked well in the past, and try to put you in the best possible position that your town can, can be very good. So first of all, let's talk about what makes this event special. It's pretty simple. The people of Iowa are unlike anywhere else in the entire world. It is our greatest asset. Why people ride Rag Ride is because they want to visit with people. People in Iowa get up at 4:00 in the morning, drive over, listen for a couple hours about Rag Ride, and go home. It's not their job, it's because they love their community. And we, we don't see that error anywhere else in the world, when people love their communities. So can-do spirit. We see tiny towns of 60 people that oppose a Rag Ride. We're talking 45 today. So if you want to take, if you want to extrapolate that and put it into how many people would come into Chicago, that would be like 3.2 billion people going into Chicago in front of it, okay? So we can do amazing things in the state of Iowa, okay? So a town of 60 can hold Rag Ride, no problem, all right? So we got this. Dude, if you're not gaining weight on Rag Ride, you're not doing it right. You're doing the most important parts of Rag Ride, okay? And we're gonna talk about all kinds of different foods and pies and all that stuff. But food is absolutely one of the best things about Rag Ride. Hospitality. People open up their churches, their BMWs, their museums, all that stuff, on people's front porches. People open up their towns in their hearts, no doubt. And then the sites. And it doesn't have to be world-class sites. I mean, if you've got the world's largest ball of popcorn, that is absolutely jam on Rag Ride. If you've got, you know, obviously, we've been to nice places like, like Field of Dreams. But I'll tell you what, when you say, hey, we're the home of the Axe Murder House, there will be 5,000 people that take their picture in front of the Axe Murder House, because that's what they want to see, all right? So anything like that, if you have one of those sites, publicize the heck out of it. If it's a county museum, whatever it is, if your kind of claim to fame is XYZ, make sure people know about that. Activities, just any kinds of activities. Someone said they had the, what, world champion horseshoe thrower? If that person's still with us, I would say that person should be challenged all day long, and I bet no one beats them, right? All day long, right? That's the kind of stuff that people are gonna be looking for, all those unique little things and activities. I heard other activities that go on in your town. That's what your town's known for. That's what should be, dress up your town, it should look great that day with all these visitors coming through, you know, getting the lawns looking good, getting those American flags out, balloons, get the kids involved, all that stuff to dress up your town, to make it look spectacular that day. Any kind of entertainment. We have the best entertainment on Rag Ride and the absolute worst entertainment, but you know what? It's all good. Anything live and entertainment is good. And we see big crowds at night, you know, during the day, it's a little bit different. But the crowds, and then the ride itself. So I just rattled off 10 things. If you ask people what they love about Rag Ride, the crowds, the rides, the food, all that, overall, it's the entire experience of what people are going through. This is why people from Hawaii come to Iowa on their vacation for 20 straight years. And it's nothing magical that we do at the Des Moines Red Sherb. We've been doing this ride for 44 years. We ride through corn, and we ride through bean fields all day long. But when they get off that bike, and when they come into your town, that's what makes Rag Ride special. And when you ask people all those things, oh, you know, the people were wonderful, the food was great, all that stuff, it's the people in this room right here that you have a bearing of what their summer's gonna be all about. And so if you listen today, we're gonna show you some tips, but that overall experience is what we're looking for. And when people look back at their phone, and they took 100 pictures, and they say, here I am riding the bull, or I'm throwing horseshoes with this guy, or, you know, I'm playing this game that I've never even heard of this game, but it was really popular, is that overall experience that they're gonna be looking for. Okay, so just some things. We want you to keep money in your town. We want your town to be amazingly successful. So think about, you know, ways that, we're gonna talk about all different kinds of ways to sell food and drink and all that kind of stuff today, but one of the things that's gonna give you some protection, if you go back in your town, we had a lot of mayors in here today, but if you put a resolution or a city ordinance in place that says you've gotta go through your official food, food permit or booth permit to set up in town, that'll give you some protection. We're seeing more and more food trucks come online throughout the Midwest. We don't want to see a food truck all of a sudden drive down from Des Moines and set up in Garden Grove, Iowa, and say, hey, we're here to sell that day. They need to have a permit, they need to go through you. You have an ordinance on your book, it protects you, okay? So think about that, there's some examples in the book, but just that little layer of protection that says, if you're setting up and selling foods or goods in town that day, you must have a permit through our local Rag Ride committee. Rag Ride doesn't take, we don't take a nickel for every Gatorade sold, we don't take, you know, $50 for every food permit. Anything that's set up in your town is what you decide. You take all the funds in, if you want to sell it all yourself, that's fine, too. But just realize, if you don't have that ordinance in place, you might have some people that roll into town with an ice cream truck or a food truck. So get those ordinances on the books, and there's some good examples in the books. If you need help with that, don't be afraid to ask us, too. We can certainly give you good, good examples. So all about keeping those dollars in your town. I would imagine every town that we talk to across here has got some group in town, the church needs new pews, the band wants to go to a trip in Florida, they need new uniforms. There's some fundraising that happens in your town that Rag Ride could be a great shot in the arm. So we want to keep as many dollars in your town as possible. And you can control who comes into your town. So some of the stuff that's gonna be budgeting. Does Rag Ride cost a few dollars? Yeah, there's some things that are, that are a cost. You don't have to worry mostly about, say, police control or something like that, most of the time, we're straight through, or barricaded, but there's things like portable toilets that might cost a few dollars. But again, if you've got people that are coming into your town paying vending fees, you can probably pay for the cost of all those portable toilets. If you're trying to keep all the dollars in town with fundraisers, you know, it might be, if you get 25 portable toilets, something like that, you need a lot less if you're right on the edge of a cornfield. Just things, we like when the corn is planted early and comes up, and the corn is at least that high, okay? But little things like that, Rag Ride doesn't really cost a whole lot on the front end. And we're gonna talk about a lot of things that are pretty much, pretty much free to do, okay? And again, selling that food and drink, not gouging people, but with the volume of people coming through, you can do very well if you, if you budget well. Some other things I want to point out, Rag Ride owns the rights to the word Rag Ride and all the logos of Rag Ride. So if you create your own theme and logo, you can sell t-shirts and stuff like that, but they won't include the word Rag Ride. Now, if you put a bicycle up here, and you've got your town, and you've got 2016, they're gonna know it's Rag Ride, they just don't say it's Rag Ride, okay? And I'll show you some good examples of really creative themes for town, but just kind of like, when you went around the room and said, our town is known for this, those are kinds of things that you put into your, into your logo. And there's some really creative people in Iowa that can come up with some neat themes, but when you're, all your town's people are wearing those shirts, we know who the, who the workers are in those towns. And it really has that great feeling of community spirit when everyone in that town is wearing that shirt. And the riders, some riders will buy the shirts. You're not gonna sell hundreds and hundreds of shirts, understand that, because riders can only carry what's on their bike, okay? But if you got a really neat design, they may order some in advance, or they might, they might buy some as well. So, but for the most part, the t-shirts in town are pretty much for your workers. I'm gonna rattle off some committees. I'm gonna kind of go through them quick, and then we're gonna kind of go into slides. But these are some committees you might think about or have a person that's in charge of. Again, beverage guards, most of those people are on the other side right now. Anyone's working with alcohol or beverage, we want to make sure they're doing it by the state, state laws. A budget, you know, usually someone in town just, just kind of looking at expenses. Rag Ride is an absolute cash business. People on the early days, Sunday, Monday, have a lot more cash in their hand. And so if you're later in the week and you have the ATM, stuff like that, if you want a point signs, that here's where our ATM is, if you have one at all in your town. Communications, how are you gonna talk in town? Cell phones are really tough to get calls out on a normal day, maybe in your town. Think about with 10,000 extra people in your town at one time, how hard it is to make a call. So radios work pretty well. Electrical, you've got to be vending set up, if you have things that are cooling down, you may have to plug in. None of the riders need anything electrical, but your vendors are probably gonna need some electrical. If you've got entertainment, you're gonna need to think about how are we gonna power, power that stage for a band to play. Entertainment, the more live entertainment, and it doesn't have to be any highfalutin entertainment, it could be kids from your high school, it could be, you know, garage bands, anything that's live. I mean, and you're gonna see different things, the dance groups and all, things like that, anything live is better than pre-recorded entertainment, all right? There's some towns that like to have DJs, and they're very popular as well, but when you see people up there, especially kids, or people in costume, if you're known for a certain ethnicity or anything like that, that's what makes people stop, get off, take photos and all that. So entertainment's important. You're gonna have obviously food and non-food vendors, and hospitality theme, and we're gonna show you a lot of good themes. Information center, I mean, if you have just a booth set up in the middle of town, say, ask me, where's the museum at? Where is, where is that place where John Brown was, was, you know, had 200 rifles? All those kinds of questions. You never know the people that are gonna ask that question. It could be a history professor from NYU, or it could be a reporter that's doing an article, a national article on the history of, of Southern Iowa. You never know what those questions are gonna be. Law enforcement, typically, most of the towns that we're on route probably don't have a police department, they might be controlled by the sheriff. Our liaison is the State Patrol, and our mainly work throughout with all the law enforcement agencies throughout the entire ride. They've been doing Rag Ride for 40-plus years. They're, they're a great agency that we get tremendous support from. We do have a meeting in June, I think it's June 27th through 29th, where we'll invite your local law enforcement to sit down and talk about the route the last time, that all the planning is done, let's talk about the route. So that's, that's a June meeting, and your law enforcement, as well as your mayor, will get an invite to, to come to a meeting in one of our overnight towns. So you'll get that invite for that. Medical's pretty simple. We have a team of people that are out there that augment your county services. We have four ambulances, two motorcycle first responders, plus a mobile ER. But on top of that, you're gonna have people that come to your fire station looking for, you know, to get patched up, they tripped over a curb, or you won't see a lot of the bike injuries, you'll say, hey, I'm a little overheated, or I got stung by a bee. You'll see different things like that that have come up. It's basically a first aid station, most of the medical in the pass-through towns. Publicity, anything you can tell us about your town. We've got a pretty tuned group that is looking for information about your town. When we announced all, all the pass-through towns that, that opening week, any information that you sent back to us, we try to portray to the riders, here's some of the neat things about the towns. The more information you give us, the more information we'll share. But if you want to put together a Facebook page, or a One Beach website, all those things are great ways to publicize what's going on in your town in advance, so people get excited about your town. Ride Right is just looking at, yeah.
So we use Rag Ride, we use a Facebook page or a website?
Yes, yeah, good question. Anything that you use the word Rag Ride promotionally is okay. So if you say, you know, we are, you know, XYZ Town, Rag Ride 2016 Facebook, absolutely, okay? Or a website, if you want to create it, you know, whatever, you know, come stand Rag Ride, no problem at all. You just can't sell things, and we'll go for some of that stuff. You can't sell things with Rag Ride, or put together a trinket, that's a tangible thing. Anything promotionally, banners, website, Facebook, absolutely fine. Good, good question. Ride Right is making sure that we are safe cyclists going through towns. And we're gonna look at your route, and also people from your town that know a little bit of bike, and just take a look and say, you know what? There's a four-foot pothole right when they make the turn into town. And if we don't fix that, that's gonna be an issue. We hurt the tracks in, in Nottaway. I think the last time, and I know we've got slides in here, Pat, of, of the train crossing from Nottaway, because it was very creative. Safety is our number one concern. Can we get people from, from the Missouri to the Mississippi safely? Because if they don't ride across safely, they can't enjoy time in your town. So Ride Right's all about safety. And risk management, the other thing is identifying those potential risks in your town, and make sure that we can, you know, safely get, get through your town. Last couple things, sanitation, making sure we got toilets, making sure we got trash. You're gonna hear this afternoon a little bit about recycling. From a girl that rides on Rag Ride each and every year, that's seen the do's and don'ts of recycling, but making sure, you're gonna have a lot of trash, wherever there's food and drink being sold, you're gonna have a lot of trash, and what are we doing with that trash? And making sure we got bathrooms for people. Plenty of volunteers, it's a fun event, you have people in your town, out, kids, seniors, everything in between. And the last thing I mentioned was website. So, so those are some of the committees. This is one of the nuggets of information, if you take away anything today, this is one thing that I'm gonna tell you right here, make them get off their bikes. And now, anyone that ride Rag Ride, and say, oh, we hate when they get us off our bicycle. You know what? No one has ever bought anything when they're riding through a bicycle at 10 miles an hour. You can't take out your wallet and buy something, okay? Get them off their bicycle, make them stop. And there's gonna be a lot of creative ways to make them stop, okay? But if you get them off, off the bike, once they got the helmet and gloves off, you got it, okay? There's reasons that they're gonna stay there longer, and we're gonna talk about some of those things. The longer they stay there, the more economic impact and, and exposure you can have for your town. Once you put the helmet and gloves back on, they're done, they're to the next town. So we're gonna talk about two on layouts of your town. If you have a two-part tier system, like, hey, we're gonna have things, and there's a theme from Alden, a Beaver theme, which is right on the dam, but again, it is just a neat kind of concept about what their theme was. So everything, you've got reading boards in your town, different historical references to Sparkersburg, where the tornado came through, and different signs of where the tornado hit in their, in their area. Dressing up a typical sign, just throwing an old bike on underneath it, you know, just made, made this little market a little more bike-friendly. And then there's a little oddities in your town, don't be afraid to pull them out, if you've got someone that's known for, you know, different things, pull those out. You know, these signs, you'll see two, because people will find Bloody Marys and Boos, pretty much says exactly what they're selling that day. So, you know, there's JP's, I saw JP's shirt in there before. And then there's some, you know, political messages that you'll see quite a bit along the way, so you'll see everything under the sun out there, so whatever, you know, floats your boat, that's fine. And then this was one of the more creative oddities spots, so I think someone sent their town some melon, so, but I think this is probably what the podcast will be about. Hospitality and themes really take on the life of what your town's about. They're more just a completely fun theme. There's theme, you'll see as we go through, there's some things that add something to you, what their town's about. I'll tell you what, John, you wanna see if they find a new battery for this one? I'm gonna send it out. All right, okay, I'm gonna talk loud until that point. Everyone hear me? Alright, okay, I'm gonna talk loud until that point. Everyone hear me alright? Thanks for having me on. So hospitality and themes, again, if you're known for something in that town, this is, you know, the whatever, Sweet Corn Capital of Iowa, whatever that is, don't be afraid to tap that on your shirts and then your theme. So as you start seeing, like, this is Stanton, Iowa, they are a Swedish town. They have Swedish dancers out there, dressed in period costumes, where they got not only the kids up dancing, but they also got riders up on that stage. Anything that riders can participate in is a really good thing. After prom, that one town had an after-prom theme, and all the moms dressed up in prom dresses from the eighties, or whatever their prom was. So, you know, just see things where, hey, take a picture with the prom queen, and you put a dollar in the bucket. You will see multiple Elvis on Rag Ride. If we don't see at least ten Elvis during the week, it's not a good Rag Ride. So this one had a double theme, had the bridges, we're probably in St. Charles or somewhere like that, and Elvis. So that's a double whammy, when you have Elvis and things. This town was known for frying pan toss, I think it was somewhere in Southern Iowa, and people lined up to throw the iron skillet at this object. Now, the problem, when you get into some of these competitive type things, if you throw an iron skillet, make sure you got an area that's not gonna bump someone on the head, okay? That will happen, alright? So think about it, if you throw horseshoes, or if you throw whatever, one town did a toilet toss before, that was what their Fourth of July celebration was. You'll have fifty people in line to do whatever that odd activity is that people do in your town. People dress up superhero costumes, I mean, anything to cause attention, people stop to take photos. You know, cutouts, again, are really popular on Rag Ride. Here's a good example, Rag Ride, and they have Shelby underneath it. Do you know exactly where that picture was taken? Some are just the one single cutout, some are the dual. If you have a dual one, it's nice to have someone there to take their photo. I don't care how tall you are, you cannot take a selfie when your arms are not gonna reach around that long, right? So, which is a good thing. So, so think about that. All kinds of different signs, welcome to our town. They didn't put a town name on this, but, you know, just fun signs, dump tanks, different things like that. Things that you typically have at your county celebrations or city celebrations. Riders will actually go into dump tanks, because if it's 105 degrees out, you don't wanna be under the water, even if it's coming from a toilet up above. So different bike sculptures are really cool. When you put these things in the middle of your main street, it stops traffic. So if you've got some massive photo opportunity, put it smack dab in the middle of your major intersection, okay? Streets close that day, it's a photo op, it makes people get off their bikes. So big signs, arches, if you're gonna do anything like this in the middle of the street, it's probably not gonna be high enough that a car can go underneath it to realize that the street's probably gonna shut down that day. So different signs, you know, here's one from Hella, they have obviously different equipment manufacturers. Equipment manufacturers always like to show off their equipment, so if you've got a big implement dealer, whatever, they'll most likely come out with their equipment, set it up on the sides, let people ride underneath it. Anything to do to promote your town is really good. Balloons work well, but balloons can kinda blow in the breeze pretty well, so be thinking if you're doing any kind of balloons, more of a permanent structure. Again, you've got welders to do, they can probably build anything in the entire world if you draw it out of one. Different things like getting kids involved, putting a little tattoo on someone's face, and saying, you know, "It's a fundraiser for 4H," or "For the Band," or anything like that. Tattoos are pretty neat. Getting cheerleaders out, when people see kids, they're gonna spend a lot more money when they see kids like cheerleaders or whatever, that are fundraising for their school trip, or whatever. So anytime you get cheerleaders out, you know, just out there in uniform would make up, you know, if they're not in uniform, you can't tell if they're cheerleaders. But at the end, after you go to the cheerleaders, then they've got a little bake sale at the end. Now, most of the people are gonna stop, they're gonna put in that donation cup a lot more when you got cheerleaders out there than, you know, guys that look like me out there, okay? So, so something about kids in Rag Ride, people have money to spend on Rag Ride, so get the kids involved. And here's a town, it's probably up on or something like that, got a biking theme. So anything that can get kids involved, again, they probably had a little boat that was set up, they probably had a celebration the week before. You got things from your celebration the week before, leave them out. There's photo opportunities like this, leave them out, okay? Any kinda costumes, anything that people are gonna stop, you know, different crash deaths, dummies. We have, you know, towns entertainment that were, you know, obviously people in traditional celebratory outfits. Different, just wacky costumes, doesn't have anything to do with the town whatsoever, but these ladies just said, "We're gonna be wacky that day." So one town was dressed up as Mayberry, and, you know, Aunt Bee, and all that, running a bike and all that. We see a lot of people on stilts up high, again, they're very talented, if you walk through Rag Ride crowd on stilts. So we see a lot of performers like that, again, it's just very conversational. So, whatever your center of celebration, those are gonna be the photo ops, when you've got an interesting water tower, if you've got a windmill in town. Anything like that, people are gonna wanna line up and take photos of. This one town did a celebration, they had, a high school was doing a production of Spamalot, and so what they did was just came out in their costumes. They took photos all day long as a fundraiser for their high school performing arts. Uncle Sam, a lot of Americana themes, and you'll see throughout. This was a pirate theme in one of the towns, the town high school was the pirates. So a lot of, they had a lot of pirate attire, their mascot, et cetera, so they made a simple boat, and a lot of photo ops, and fun. Again, just a little cutout where people can sit their face in. This was town of Pocahontas, so obviously you gotta have Pocahontas out there. And then people would take their photos with Pocahontas, okay? Some things are more of a fundraiser, some things are more of a just promotional item. But again, all those things add up to getting people off the bike, because no one can take a picture while they're riding by a bike. That work for John? That's why you're working the best in the business, John, at least from the top five. So here's another Mayberry theme, like, you know, they had a little, they had a, like, what, one of the smallest, what? They had one of those little tiny little jails, and they locked people in there, and it cost them a dollar to get out. So, you know, they'd have the sheriff that would lock them up, or Andy Giriff who would lock them up, and, you know, they had the town drunk over here too, Otis. And they'd throw people in there, and said you'd have to pay bail to get out of there, and that went to the after-prom committee. So little crazy things like that, you know, people love those types of photos. Different dress-up costumes, I mean, these are pretty hot though, you gotta think about what you're wearing. If you're going medieval on Rag Ride, real tough, if you've got full armor on, okay? Lots of animals, we see a lot more camels lately that are out there, but I'm gonna show you a slew of different animals. People from New York City have never seen a little piglet before, okay? They've never seen these things, goat races, they'll be like, "Oh my gosh, we participated in goat racing." Chicken poop bingo, all these kinds of things are really, really popular. So, so think about it when you're doing themes, this one was dressed up as a baby. Hobo Days up in, I think it was Iowa has Hobo Days, or somewhere up there. Singing nuns, just be creative, different ways to get people involved. One town did a MASH theme, I've no idea if they had any connection to MASH whatsoever. It was somewhere in Southern Iowa that did a MASH theme, and all the people dressed up, did a little military vehicles around, but it was kind of a fun theme. One town built Mount Rag Ride, that you can actually walk up these stairs and take your photo, and it was one of the neatest things I've ever seen. But more people have that photo taken in their photo collection when they're set and done with Rag Ride. Just pick bikes, welcome Rag Ride. This was town known for sauerkraut days, so the mayor dressed up in the hot dog costume all day long, and just welcomed people. Piglets, who can resist? Now, you put piglets out there, every town person's gonna get, they're gonna go to the bathroom on them, so just understand that, they understand that. But everyone loves a little pig, bigger pigs as well. So you can have cows, we think these out, I mean, these are animals that are probably at your disposal. Little kids walking gavs around, chickens, fake chickens, fake bulls. Goes between, there we go, where's the town? See, I told you we'd have a big steer in there somewhere, right? Is Ollie bigger than that?
Yeah.
Alright, alright. So, again, they just had a long horn, said, "Hey, I'll hop on there." But then we had the biggest animal we've ever seen on Rag Ride, they had elephant rides, I don't know if it was just kinda passing through, but I don't think we'd get one bigger than elephants, so I think that's gonna be tough to top. And then one town, Lagoon Rapids, had a big raccoon and a mascot raccoon kinda laying there, and that's what Key Roadkill will get you with stickers and stuff like that, so, kinda fun stuff, but again, see, they're real smart, they got a little tip jar right there, and it's for, you know, Lagoon Rapids baseball team or something like that. So, little fun things, you know, putting cars out, I mean, people stop, I mean, how hard is it to take, you know, five minutes to put together this contraption if you owned into a truck like that? It's amazing, people, you know, you see tractors every day of your life in Iowa, but if you're from Chicago or wherever, you're like, wow, you know, they have a lot of tractors in Iowa. So, people climb on them, again, if women dealers probably don't mind you climbing on their tractors. Some have an issue with it, but we take all kinds, red, green, doesn't matter, yellow. So put your tractors out, old ones, put the American flags up, you know, welcome Rag Ride, right on the implement dealer. And I'm gonna show you what the other use of the tractor is as we go on. This guy rode his tractor across the United States, and he was a local celebrity. So, people lined up, they had a little sign that said, "Come meet whoever he rode his tractor across the United States." And he took photos with people all day long. Line up your tractors, on the way into town, you line up, you know, fifteen tractors along the way chronologically. And people out there are gonna stop and say, "Can you tell me about this tractor right here?" Well, that was built in Charles City, and that was built in 1804, and my great-grandfather, you know, worked on the engine for those. People have some interesting questions, and again, a lot of these folks have never seen or touched farm animals or farm equipment. Towns that have done a corn maze, hard to see on Rag Ride, but people could actually walk through this entire corn maze. And the aerials on that, this was on the front page of the Des Moines Register as well, because they were very creative and said, "We're gonna do a corn maze that day." And this was the actual route this year, that was in Manning, Iowa, the corn maze. Little fun things, bicycles and baskets and flowers, parachutes in the downtown, just creative ways to dress up your town. And actually, this town, this was Dayton, and they actually did a huge mural here. It was the next year coming up, I think they had a celebration, so they had the high school kids paint a mural, and they had some bike components to it, but they also just said, "Hey, we're really gonna dress up our town for our celebration coming up," and it looked great that day. Little kids involved, Little Miss Iowa, again, kisses for a dollar, just little fun, creative things that they can do. There's Mount Vernon Lisbon, they dress up as the Beatles, and just a ton of people lined up to take photos. Again, real smart, because, again, they've got Mount Vernon Lisbon right there that everyone lined up for the Sergeant Pepper theme. Just different things, using their playground, a tractor, they had a Hawaiian theme with this town. Getting little kids involved, they're the best salespeople in the entire world when you get the kids involved. Just a bicycle made of junk parts, pretty much, and it's just a big creative bike, and that actually turned and stuff like that. But this was Parkersburg, and they assembled this, I don't know, fifteen-foot bicycle. They did a fundraiser at Ed Tom Stadium that year, and they had a couple of players skiing back, and just some neat fundraising as well. Chalk sidewalks, people can write their name on that, real simple stuff, all you provide is chalk. And here's like a typical downtown, it's hard to do chalkings and stuff like that in the downtown, but that's Parkersburg, with an Americana theme. Anything with your theme, get mayors and bucket trucks welcoming people to the town, "Hey, where you from?", different things like that. So, this one town, this was, I think, the only Hawaiian mayor in the entire state of Iowa. He worked at a forum company, he said, "I'm gonna build this giant volcano." It doesn't really look like a volcano in that picture, but it is a volcano, and the thing would erupt every like thirty minutes, okay? And his daughter's out there, and he took photos in front of that volcano all day long, I think it was in Lorenz, if I'm not mistaken. This actually was a merry-go-round, and it actually was pedaled by this bicycle right here, and when they turned that, it would turn the big. So just real crazy things that people have put together. Hay bales, again, it doesn't cost, you know, anything to put together this little thing, welcome to see. Fun little things. So balloons, balloons are kinda cool. Again, like a little sign of who the person is, if it's a famous person in some way. The longest-running mayor in the state of Iowa, whatever, or, you know, four-time wrestling champ in 1902, or whatever. Little things like that are neat. Swimming pools, big ship swimming pools. Town Kimbleton had a mermaid theme, so that girl's dressed up. I can guarantee you, there's a lot of people that took photos of the mermaids all day long. But again, if you've gathered a retirement home, and the route goes by it, there are people that'll stop at the retirement home and talk to people all day long. And it is one of the best experiences for the people in the retirement home. I know, Jim, you had mentioned, when we went through Mount Air, how impressed the retirement home at the end of town had a lot of visitors all day long. And the residents of the retirement home probably had as much fun as the riders. But, you know, it's probably not often that they get 10,000 visitors in a day, okay? So, you'll have to say, "Come on, we gotta go back in, you've been out here for eight hours at this point." So, so don't be afraid to, you know, plan those things out, put them in the shade for sure. Just different things, again, jails, city jail for Thor. Lots of American flags, so you'll see, we're a couple weeks after the Fourth of July. So think about all the different American flag ideas. Just different, just different things. And then entertainment, it doesn't have to be world-class entertainment. High school alumni band, different things, I mean, it could be a setup like this. Your band budget should be minimal, okay, maybe gas money and free food, but you don't have to be spending thousands of dollars on the band, okay? So you spend maybe a few hundred dollars if you're gonna have a band that needs to hook up and drive over. But for the most part, it's logos that are gonna play and entertain. If you've got a band show, use your band show. Setting up just right in the street is fine too, and again, alumni bands, anything that's live entertainment. Some of the bands are a little bit more well-known. Anything with kids involving in entertainment, really good stuff. So, again, if you've got one of these type of contraptions in your downtown, use them. That's what the route goes through, that's your main focus, that stage is already put together. If you don't have a stage, a flatbed trailer works really well. I mean, it's simple, very simple, very, very simple. So here's just a flatbed trailer lined up with a band on it. So, doesn't have to be the greatest entertainers in the world, but again, anything live makes it special. They're gonna wanna be in shade, there's no doubt. So if there's like a, say, a basketball court in the middle of your park, and it's got a little bit of shade, if they're entertaining, you want the people that, people will not sit out in the direct sunlight, but look at all this shade. They've got tons of people around eating food and listening to music. So, music comes in all shapes and sizes, it could be discreet performers, it could be just a tuba player that goes out there, sets up. So, people like to dance too, and as the day gets longer, the dancing picks up, no doubt about it, but, you know, if it's pop and music, if it's rock and roll, it doesn't matter. I mean, people are gonna wanna have a good time. So, and it's not just the riders that enjoy Rag Ride, you'll have all kinds of citizens out there dancing as well. Just little fun games to have, dancing, or dancing. How many Elvis are we up to now, is that three or four? Alright, so again, just a little flatbed, route's gonna go right through town, and right by that flatbed, they can make announcements from those stages. Live entertainment really does well. Any kind of instrument, chordians, you know, as they're riding into town, really lifts their spirits. Different things like, like I said, dump tanks. This one had a big swing a couple years ago, this had thousands of people, and they each signed a waiver to go on the big swing. I wouldn't do it unless you've got lots of insurance and lots of protection, but it was kinda... I wouldn't do it unless you've got lots of insurance and lots of protection, but it was kind of fun. Big dance parties, like right in the middle of your downtown. All you gotta do is have music, and people will, people will have a good time in your town. Just typical downtown in Iowa.
Is it faster in town? How long, or is most of the people, what is all the time frame?
Pretty, pretty close, the mass majority will go, by the time you hit your shutdown time, they'll be gone. You'll probably have ninety-five percent of the people through the town, unless there's something falling back, like a major wind or something like that. They've got basically six o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night. And so, they're gonna be pushing along, because all the services shut down. Like that first town might be at noon shut down or something like that. If you look at that shutdown time, you're gonna say, wow, that big rush, they're long gone by the time that shutdown time comes in. And so, we, we're, we see him just about as ghosted, especially in the longer day, like a seventy-mile day, if you're one of those early towns, that shutdown time will be later than the masses are already long gone. And we'll talk a little bit more about shutdown times and all that, but it's, it's pretty, we're basically using ten miles an hour as the slowest rider, and you can still make it into town. But you'll see, when you see their shutdown time, the masses are long, long gone by that point. So, this is definitely late afternoon, you start seeing a bigger crowd, and you'll see much bigger crowds as we go. So, any, any kind of entertainment is great, jugglers, giant jenga is another popular one lately. Little, little races, anything, these are bathtub races, that one town was known for. Couch it, toss, okay? So, again, anything like that, that's kind of participatory. Some of the blow-up vendors will come in, these are safer ways to do little obstacle courses than slides. Human foosball is another popular one. They're basically playing human foosball right here, didn't take much to set up human foosball. But again, they had people that played, it was in the shade, which was kind of nice. Just different creative ways to get people involved in competitions. You know, carnival games, if you will, ring the bell. Mechanical bowls, if they come in, make sure they're signing waivers, anything like that. Maybe you'll see people that'll get hurt on things like this, okay? If you're getting on a live bowl and you're controlled, a lot different than trying to ride the mechanical bowl, and then that guy breaks his clavicle and his Rag Ride is over. Toilet races are kind of fun, motorized toilets. Museums, will ten thousand people go through your county museum? Absolutely not. But it'll probably be the most popular day of your museum's entire history, okay? So, if you had two thousand people walk through a county museum on any day, I'm guessing that's probably the best day you ever had at your museum. And then have little trentis there, postcards, different things like that. So, these things are, these are absolute stop-and-take-a-photo type of opportunities. So, if you have things that look similar to this in your town, and the route goes by there, there are gonna be people that get off and take their photo. This is outside the Bob Keller Museum in Van Meter. Big baseball, people lined up in front of that. The world's largest popcorn ball. Probably a good fifty people eat all day long to take their picture in front of the giant popcorn ball. Different, interesting things, Axe Murder House, there's a picture of the Axe Murder House. Again, people laying in pews, I guess. The Grotto, one of our gems of Iowa, no pun intended, but... So, again, anything like museums or attractions, obviously, Field of Dreams, Hobo Museum, anything that's, that's interesting like that, let people know about. This is called the Watching Pole, the world's largest traveling junk pile. It actually ran on steam. If you've got cool churches, people will go in, there's history buffs that I wanna go in to see or eat churches. This is a little town of Hanover, population zero. They had about thirty or forty volunteers that ran the historic Hanover Village. They probably served seven thousand people in Hanover that day. All they did was chicken sandwiches, hamburgers, brats, pie. That's it, pick one of those. But they have a tour all back here of all their steam engines and different things like that. It's been their greatest fundraiser, we've been through there twice, and their committee works on it, and it's been one of the greatest fundraisers for them. They've been able to upkeep their buildings because of Rag Ride. So, if, if some of your museums have floors that are sensitive, like wood floors, it's okay to ask people to take their cleats off if they're walking through. Some people have metal cleats that might harm a floor, so if you've got a museum that's got a sensitive floor, make sure you tell people, hey, can you take your cleats off? But different things, churches are neat, people will go explore them. Obviously, this church is on route this year, Bethlehem. If you've got a church like this, I don't know, there's a couple of people that are close to Bethlehem. There might be four or five weddings in chapels like this on Rag Ride. Every year, we see a lot of weddings on Rag Ride. We have an equal number of divorces on Rag Ride as well for others. Really keeping up with the trends, so... But if you've got a cool church or chapel like that, you're probably gonna have some weddings there, okay? So, just neat places, attractions, barns, covered bridges with people dressed up. So, so all those things may get off and stopped. If you've got museums, you've got signs, if you've got different things like that. So, this is what your masses are gonna look like as we're coming into town. This huge stream of bikes, it's gonna build throughout the day. We want people to be real narrow. If you got it wide, people can ride their bikes here. When you get it down really narrow, this is, this is Mount Vernon. They had all the vendors lined up along one street, and then this is just a regular width of a street. People had to get off their bike, walk their bike, but as you walk your bike, you go by all the smells and say, ooh, I want that. So, this is okay to be nice and tight in there. So, no matter what street it is, and then once you get to your main celebration area, people are off their bikes, they put their bikes away, and they go get something to eat. So, most of these towns, you can see where the masses are. It's hard to get through some of these towns, okay? So, you can see the masses. Typical afternoon shot of Rag Ride, just wall-to-wall people. So, think about that, you can drive through that, that day. This is, this is Rag Ride peak time, that's what your town will look like. So, later in the afternoon, people have a little different perspective on what Rag Ride is, so... But, you know, no matter what, lots of people coming through. So, we're gonna get you, get you ready for those massive numbers of people. The roads kind of close themselves, we put barricades out of where people aren't too big. It's really good when you do see this, this actual turn. That turn's actually, will stop people pretty good. If you've got a town that's straight through, or if the route comes here and makes a turn, a turn will naturally slow people down, make them get off their bikes. Once you hit this log jam right here, and this is still early in the day, if the bike's going down here, you make the turn, turns will slow people down as well. But you wanna get people off the bike, 'cause that's something you cannot ride through. And for a lot of towns, the route that we're going through is probably the only feasible route to get through town, 'cause the other roads are gonna be jam-packed with vehicles parked, and trucks, and all that kind of stuff, so you wanna keep them on the route. So, again, this is a typical town, wall-to-wall people. Wall-to-wall people. It doesn't matter what town, you couldn't even tell me what towns these are, but again, there are capacity people in each of these towns. So, that's what a road looks like early in the morning, okay? So, this is, this is probably nine miles into the day, outside of Sioux City. Just wall-to-wall people. These are the people that are gonna be coming into your town. As it gets later, they get spread out, early in the day, you get hit, you get hit hard. So, our shutdown times, the reason why we have shutdown times is our ambulance drivers and our state patrol people and all those people are on the road from six o'clock in the morning to six P.M. So, we're gonna give them a time that they need to be through your town. Now, those times, you know, based on past experience, the mass, mass majority of people will be through your town by that point, going to the next town. And then it's only fair to those next towns that you get, you've got riders, just keep keeping that pace going. Now, what they'll talk about in the other room, the state patrol's gonna push, push those people through, try to get them in by six o'clock. And if you haven't hosted in a while, they do a really good job lately of really pushing, they've got it down to a science, that riders respond to them. So, the state patrol will come in, you don't have to say, if you're in a town, okay, if people leave, they'll come in and kind of nudge people through, okay? So, projected rider, rider arrivals, if you're one of the early towns, I mean, basically, people, people will leave earlier than six o'clock, and tell them not to before six o'clock. But there will be some people at five o'clock in the morning, there'll be people, literally at three o'clock in the morning, they get on their bike and try to ride to your town, and they're like, hey, it's four o'clock in the morning, why aren't you set up and ready for me? Tell them, keep going, have a nice day, okay? You wanna be ready for when the masses hit you, okay? So, if you're the first town out, you know, you're probably ready at five o'clock in the morning, 'cause if you're trying to move trucks and tanks and all that, you'd rather be waiting for them than trying to do all that stuff, 'cause once that wave hits, you saw those pictures, you can't move anything. So, if you tell vendors, you need to be set up by five o'clock in the morning or four-thirty in the morning, you see when they start coming in, you're not pulling in the trailer after that. So, be well-ready before then, you'll be glad. If you're just sitting around waiting for people, you'll be real happy that you're set up and ready. And when we come through on, on the pre-ride, we'll talk about it, we'll give you a pretty good estimate of, hey, what time you think the bulk of people, we'll give you like a three or four-hour window that we think you're really gonna get slammed from six to ten. We'll give you a pretty good snapshot of what you can expect. The meeting town is the only town that we want vehicles to go into, okay? So, for example, Hayesville, probably not gonna be a meeting town, because there's probably not enough places to put cars. You might have five hundred cars that day to go into those meeting towns. But there's also a road that'll get cars that are not on the bike route. Will cars come into your town? Yes. It hurts your business to have those cars and buses in your town, okay? Because if you've got a Rag Ride bus, and you're a car owner, you don't want them, because you know what? That bus has probably got cases of beer on it, and they're not buying it in your town. They've got pop and water and all that. So, if those buses come close to your downtown, that becomes their personal bar at that point. So, it's better for your town not to allow those cars and buses close to your celebration, okay? If they're off on the outskirts of town, that is a big deal. But when they produce their own party, and you let them right into your Main Street USA, it hurts your town. So, meeting towns, the only one we encourage cars to come into. The other ones, they want to sneak in on the gravel road, just don't let them close to your celebration. Barricade all that stuff off, and we can talk about that, of how your town is set up and how far back that perimeter might be. Some of the things that are just a meeting towns, vehicles in town, they will also host an Boyd Redshirt newsroom, and it's basically, it could be a room in the library. Basically, reporters, photographers will come in and edit and send their stuff back to Des Moines. So, we'll ask you to have just a little newsroom, it could be a room in City Hall, that people wanna get in, in air conditioning, hopefully, to do their stories. We also have the University of Iowa Medical Treatment Center, they'll set up in the meeting town. It's basically a mobile emergency room that is an RV, and they'll have doctors onboard. But what's nice about that is if they wreck the day before, they need to have their bandages changed or take medication if they're insulin dependent, they will hook up with that, that big RV and say, they're always gonna be in the meeting town, and I can meet up with them there. So, it's a good thing to have in your town, and then we'll have a Rag Ride information and merchandise tent in your town as well, if you're a meeting town. So, those are some things with the meeting towns, we'll talk to you from here as you start getting your plans in place of, hey, our food vendors are gonna be here, where's the, where's the newsroom gonna be? Where's the University of Iowa bus gonna be? And where's the Des Moines Register setup gonna be? So, those meeting towns, we'll talk about those. So, this is a typical Rag Ride bus, so vehicles in town. Again, they've got everything under the sun inside these buses, so if they come into your town, less business for your town. So, again, the newsroom, reporters will come in. Sometimes they do some live shows from towns, we'll see if they're gonna do that this year. This is what the University of Iowa bus looks like, completely self-contained. It might be parked outside your fire station or something like that, that's what it looks like. Our Rag Ride information booth is just a twenty-by-twenty, and this is what, this is what it looks like. It's just really a tent with a band behind it, they answer questions about Rag Ride, maybe sell a few items. The Karas Loop is the other special town, or one of the other special towns, I know Mini Creek is on the Loop this year. Here's John Karas, the founder, one of the co-founders of Rag Ride. The neat thing about the Loop is, we give out a patch to everyone on the Loop. Everyone that's on the Loop that's a Redshirt rider will have to come to see John to get their patch. We'll probably give out three thousand, thirty-five hundred of those patches. So, we have the ability this time to actually bring them all the way to the resort, that's where you wanna give them out. Bring them all the way down that, that road, all the way up to the resort, and then they can go back out to, to resume the route. So, it is a hook that we do see a lot of people. People on the Loop will typically eat at that Loop stop, because there's less traffic than all the other towns. So, I know we're putting John up at the resort, and I think we've got about forty rooms at the resort, so it's gonna be a really neat setting to actually do an official stop at the resort this year. And it is truly a neat, a neat thing for the state of Iowa. So, we'll certainly, now, hopefully caught a lot of those, but your restaurant is gonna do very well too. So, John will be there. The gravel Loop sees less people, but with the, with the trail and all that, they're pretty well-known, obviously. We saw, last year was the first year of the Loop, we probably saw close to two thousand people that were official riders, and we probably had five thousand people actually in the town of Pomeroy last year, they had a good band playing. Just, it was just a neat little concept of just saying, hey, we're gonna do a gravel Loop, it's optional. Back when Greeny was running things, he'd always put them on gravel, right? He loved that gravel, but we tried to keep them off the gravel. Last year, we had a little gravel here and there when bridges were out, but it's a part of Iowa, and we'll put them on the gravel Loop for, for Im Machine is the only tent. We will give out a Loop patch as well. The gravel Loop patch is really neat this year, 'cause it's got a shamrock on it, and it'll be really cool, people will want that patch. And we'll have people that'll be in your town actually hand out those patches, okay? So, it'll be a hook to get them in the, in the town. So, a lot of people question, am I a breakfast town, a lunch town, a brunch town? And we're gonna kind of touch on some of that. If you're the first town out, within the first twenty miles, people are gonna be looking for breakfast, there's no doubt about it. After that, it can really become a lunch, brunch town. And depending on, there are some towns that'll turn from a breakfast town to a lunch town. So, the early riders might be looking for more breakfast-y stuff. If we've got a fifty-mile day, and you're in a town that's twenty miles into the day, the early riders are gonna be looking for breakfast items. As the day gets longer, there's some people will not leave on a fifty-mile day till ten o'clock in the morning. So, they may not eat your town till noon. So, they may not be looking for pancakes at noon, but there's some people that are looking for pancakes. So, depending on the distance of the day, and where you are in the route will determine what you're serving. Most towns are brunch, lunch, tents, okay? And the popularity of different things that are, people are serving, anything that you can mass-produce, because people are gonna be looking, where are those short lines are? So, if you can mass-produce pancakes, waffles, these are set up not one at a time, but mass-produced French toast, anything that's mass-produced to get people through the lines. These are all fundraisers in your town. So, if a vendor comes to you and says, I wanna do pancakes, make sure it's a good deal for your town. They're gonna be looking after themselves, I can tell you right now. Anyone that says, we want exclusivity in your town, tell them absolutely not, okay? There's no vendor in the entire world that can serve all of Rag Ride. I don't care if they say, well, we'll serve fifteen hundred pancakes. That's a drop in the bucket for how many people you can serve that day. If anyone that says, we wanna be the only of this, tell them you can be one of, one of some people coming into town. Pre-made stuff, I mean, or not pre-made stuff, but, but mass-produced stuff, I mean, think it out, how are you gonna produce things that day? If you've got a town that's known for a certain ethnic background, have those things out there, okay? So, if you're, you know, say Columbus, Columbus Junction, if you're at Columbus Junction, I'm sure your, your food is probably a little bit different than, say, Malvern, okay? With the, with the background of your, of the people from town. That's what riders are expecting, okay? So, if you've got some, some different ethnic backgrounds, it should be on display. And, and you know what? People get sick of the regular fried tenderloins after a while, they're looking for different things. So, but your staples, your pork, something, obviously, don't make the mistake of thinking Rag Ride riders are real healthy people, and that all they're gonna eat is healthy food. It's a complete lie, okay? is healthy food, it's a complete lie, okay? They don't mind fatty things that taste good, right? Mike, you've served enough food on Rag Ride, or healthy food's the only thing that you need there? No, not at all. So, again, mass-produced, there are going to be massive drills, things like this, who cannot stop and stop it? When, when that smell is drifting right through them like that, there's no way you can say, no, I don't want one of those, okay? Mass-producing, your cattle, cattle man and pork producer, all those kinds of people are going to be getting out. So your food inspector's going to tell you that it's got to be prepared on-site, and different things like that, turkey legs, there's handballs, I think some town mentioned handballs, smoothie vendors, there are some outside vendors that'll want to come and set up, most of those vendors are willing to pay three or four hundred dollars to set up in your town, because they don't have to worry about bathrooms or different logistics like that. So if you say you want those outside vendors, put it up on a website or a Facebook page, here's the application, but they will pay it. So getting lots of people involved. Rain is going to be one of the things that changes, you know, but if you've got indoor space, people will go inside. Some things are tough to serve, like shrimp, but you know what? People killed it when they did shrimp, because it was such a rarity on, on Rag Ride, just brought it up from, I think, Louisiana. Sweet corn, obviously, depending on how the season goes, sweet corn hopefully is ready for Rag Ride. Watermelon, anything like that, watermelon products of Iowa are great, people are looking for those, okay? And again, cash and carry, as quick as you can get people through the line, you know, pies are all cut, pies are all ready, individually wrapped like that, so people can just pick what they want. So have your pricing on there, so people don't have to think about it.
Hey Scott?
I've got a question. Yeah?
The vendors paying the money for four hundred dollars, someone told us that we have to charge everybody the same amount, like local kids, if local kids sell them locally, right?
You can charge nonprofits one rate, you can charge for-profits another, all your nonprofits are going to be local kids. Okay, so if you want to charge the baseball team fifty dollars, set the nonprofit fee at fifty dollars, either you want to charge the outs, or, or twenty-five dollars, whatever that dollar amount is, and then the outsiders, or your for-profit vendors, three hundred, four hundred dollars, absolutely, okay? Okay, so different food vending, again, so they can quickly come up and grab what they want, Gatorade, Gatorade pretty much two bucks, bottled water is a buck, okay? That's your, as, as basic as it gets, you want whole dollar amounts if you can, you know, pie, again, think about that, how much would you pay for a hunk of pie? You get the extra dollar for the slab of ice cream on top of it. So plenty of good signs wherever the food vending is, there won't be lines, no doubt, on Rag Ride, these are typical lines, people will wait if there's something that they want, okay? But there's going to be good lines, be prepared, you know, kids getting out, you know, plenty of tents, if you've got cool ice cream trucks like this, you know, one dollar, you know, lots of one dollar, two dollar things. Here's a community went in under one tent, they all went in together, they were a small community, said, you know what, we're going to work as a team, all forty people in the community are going to go in together, yeah.
I remember last time that Mike went with pie, they all had, it wasn't good enough to have it on a paper plate, you had to have it in the self-contained container, is that still true?
Well, your, your local food inspector's going to tell you how they want it served, okay? So you can check with them, what might be for your county might be different for a different county, so you saw those individual containers, your food inspector asks them in advance, how do you want it? Because some are okay if you cut it and, and put it on those plates, some are saying they've got to be in individual containers. Your individual, and, and you've got the contact information for your food inspector in your folder, there's a list there that's got all the food inspectors, talk to them directly and say, what, what can we do with this product, okay? So food vending, when you've got it lined up, you know, bananas, they've got one cashier, they've got Gatorade, water, you know, whatever the product is, but they all went in together and said, hey, we're going to do this, and then we're going to divide up the profits at the end. Three churches went in, or whatever, two churches went in and said, hey, that way we know everyone's going to have a good day. So those things have worked well in the past, you know, icing things down, seating, most towns don't have any seating, their curbs are good, some will have, you know, cafeterias or church basements and stuff like that, those are great, if you have them, putting out lawn chairs works, putting out little benches like this are great, anything that you can get them off the ground, just creatively, hay bales, if you've got picnic tables, put them out where the people are going to be, little planks that people can sustain and eat, you're sitting on a bicycle all day long, so you don't care about sitting your butt down in a chair, okay? You want to get out of a seat, because you're on a bicycle seat all day long, so standing is okay, and you can get a lot more people on these planks, okay? Hay bales work pretty good, anywhere that there's shade, there will be people, they don't mind sitting on the grass if they're in shade, so, so you don't need to have seating for ten thousand people, no one can even come close to that, just quarantine off the little area where you're going to have seating. Free water's another great way to get people to stop, it doesn't hurt your water sales one bit to have free water, okay? Because people are going to buy bottled water and drink it in your town, have your free water at the end of town before they leave to go to the next town, because they're going to want to buy, some people will buy just bottled water in their water bottles, others will be looking for that water, but you know what? At the very end, after they've bought everything in town, they're going to fill up their water bottle and go to the next town. So have your free water at the end, not why they're saying, oh, we want it at the very beginning, we want you to buy the bottled water in town, fill up the free water as you're leaving your town, okay? So you've got people that are real good at irrigation in your community, farmers, et cetera, people that, that work at the high schools that have, you know, thirty soccer players that come off the field at once, so think about different ways that they can fill up, fill up water bottles quickly, okay? So have different contraptions like that. Yes?
Is there any recommendations on that, when you recommend to towns that you have regulations as far as for the water, it's got to be like clean tap water, or when you fill up the tanks?
No, not from tanks, what they're basically going to look at is, do they have something that's catching the water underneath, they're looking for non-green garden hoses, so usually it's the white hoses and the white PVC that, that are more sanitary, okay? But there's a lot that are hooked up to fire hydrants, that are slowly tricking out, but it's the catching of the gray water that a hose will go to a, a sanitary sewer at that point, okay? I've seen most water setups on Rag Ride, I'm going to say, maybe a quarter of them actually have a, a catch like this. People need to have water, okay? And, I mean, if that's, if that's what's holding up, and people are, I, I don't see people cracking down, because it's such a safety issue to make sure that they have plenty of water, and there will be people, if you don't have contraption like this, going up to spigots on sides of buildings and filling up water bottles. So the more mass water holders like this, I mean, basically, this is what they do for, for my son's football practice, they've got little spigots like this, there's no gray water catch, no one finds my son's school for them, so, so have the catch underneath if you can, okay? But there's a lot of pictures that I'm showing you that, that no one had anything underneath it. So there's some fancy water stations, cooling water is important, some people don't want to be sprayed on their bike, so have an option that you can avoid going through, these things are neat little cooling stations, the temperatures get up, all they're doing is misting water, and again, someone that works with irrigation can tell you how to set these up for minimal, minimal cost. The amount of water that comes out of sprayers like that, very, very minimal. So little dump tanks, probably not the most sanitary of things, but anything that can spray or miss people, you're going to see a lot of people go underneath that on a hot day, so some are more professional like that, any kind of shade, especially beer gardens and stuff like that, any kind of shade is an absolute premium, okay? Now bike, bike racks is another thing that you want to think out, okay? There are no like professional bike racks on Rag Ride that can hold thousands of bikes, okay? And if you don't plan for any bike racks, I'm going to show you what your town will look like, okay? So we'll see bikes leaning up against everything possible, okay? Basically, towns, what they do is connect a cable between two tractors, and I'm going to show you what, what it is, and you can, a bicycle weighs about twenty pounds, the amount of pressure of each bicycle, when you have the back tire on the ground and the handlebar on that cable, it's probably about two or three pounds per bicycle, okay? Think about how much pounds of pressure it takes to move a tractor, that's a massive tractor. So you can have basically a tractor over here, and all the way as far as you have cable for it, you can connect the two, the two, and there will be thousands of bicycles on those, on those cables. People will need to step over them, because if you have a cut through, then you're going to have four tractors instead of two tractors, so people will climb under them, climb over them, will people get on those? Absolutely, you can put the little fluorescent tape on some of them, but throughout the day, most of your tractors are going to look like that. You'll see as we go here, massive tractors, implement dealers are happy to get the tractors, and you can see how long, you can barely see the tractor over there, how, how long that row of bikes is, okay? And what you're doing is, just looking at this, is basically the height of the bicycle handlebar, they hook the bicycle handlebars over that, you pull it tight, you look at right here, any farm supplier, most farmers are going to have your cabling like that, so if you talk to a farmer, show him a picture like this, they're going to have that figured out in about five seconds of how to put together that, that tractor. If you want to test ride it, when we do the pre-ride, we can show you exactly how it works, but, or test them out, but real simple to do that, and that's the best bike rack. If you don't have a bike rack, this is what your town looks like, and you can't get through, bicycles are hurt, people don't like that, there are just bikes everywhere instead of on a rack, okay? Our medical team will come through, they'll, they'll, they'll work with your, your local, you know, county services, you will see them coming through town constantly, okay? They will pick up people, you'll probably have a first aid station that will gather folks if they're exhausted, or, we, we also have people that'll pick them up, we'll talk about what a sag wagon is, but we will have a team of medical providers that have Rag Ride ambulances in addition to your county services, so you don't have to worry about those, their dispatch through nine-one-one, so if there's a bike you're down, they will, they will coordinate with your county services, so, so you don't have to worry about, hey, how do I get Rag Ride ambulances, nine-one-one through your regular dispatches, and our Rag Ride team will work with your county services people. So we stay out of the medical business, stay out of the police business, they've been doing this for, again, forty years on Rag Ride. Sanitation is one of your responsibilities, making sure you've got plenty of portable toilets, the more you want to keep people in town, the more toilets you're going to need. So if you're just a small town of forty, and we're going to have two churches set up, you know, you may have, say, you know, twenty portable toilets or something like that, or, or fifteen, but if you're doing big celebration on your square, near the meeting town, and you're, you've got bands, and you've got forty food vendors, you know, you may need thirty-five or forty bathrooms, okay? Handicap unit is, as well, but if you just think about it, if you're trying to keep those people there for a long time, that's one thing, the bathrooms is another thing that should be, not right on your square, but in an alley or something like that, typically bathrooms are at least a hundred feet away from any kind of prepared food, so, so make sure you're starting to call those people now, if you haven't called them already, and saying, can we have portable toilets? Now, I will tell you this, if you've got permanent bathrooms, like at a pool house and stuff like that, those count against your toilets. If you have cornfields surrounding where your park is, people will go use the cornfields, especially guys will use the cornfield with no problem, compared to waiting the twenty-five minutes to wait in the bathroom line, people will walk to that cornfield in a heartbeat, okay? And they say that corn crops are up the next year, or, or that year after the bathroom of Rag Ride, so, so toilets are very important, you can get creative on them, you know, but typically, it's just a row of toilets all in one location, you might have two locations depending on how your, your setup is, but, you know, they're, they're more friendly when they're in the shade, if you find that, and you're going to hear a lot more about trash and recycling afterwards, but wherever food and drink are, you're going to see bathrooms, and you're going to see trash and recycle, okay? You'll also have a bike shop in your town, each and every town that is on that list, you'll see a listing of the bike shops, bike shops are good for your town. If someone has a problem with their bicycle, they will leave their bike, and it could take them an hour to get their bike fixed, that means without a doubt, they're going to stop and eat in your town, okay? So you might have one, you might have two, you might have three bicycles shops in your town, they are there to get those bikes fixed, repaired, if they can, and so people can continue their ride, so you don't charge them, they're going to come into your town, they're usually not right in the heart of town, they're usually before your activities really heat up, all they're going to be doing is repairing bikes, they might be selling water bottles or, or tires, but this is a typical setup, you got, there's two bike shops, you got two tents in front of their truck, and it's before all your chaos, so if you've got all your vendors right down Main Street USA, you've got a free block area of, of your food vendors and entertainment, before all that starts, say, that's where the food vendors are going to be, they've got to be on the route, but people will leave their bike there, and then walk down and get something to eat, and come back when their bike's ready. So if you can't read the schedule, I think, in each and every book, there should be a bike shop schedule in there, if you want to contact them in advance, great, some of them will come in the night before, because if they're set up, if you're the first town out, they'll probably sleep in their van in your town while you're setting up your celebration, so, so kind of keep that in mind, that you will have some bike shops in town, and if you've got questions about it, don't be afraid to ask them, I know those. The sag wagons will run from six o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night, when we say a shutdown time, the sag drivers riding these vans that say sag wagon on it, you'll see a big sign, and there's a good sign, they say sag wagon, they will come into your fire station or wherever you're gathering places where people are cooling off, and say, hey, do you have any riders for us? On hot days and stuff like that, long days, we will pick up tons of people and bring them all the way to the end, we don't pick them up and bring them to the next town, because then we're a taxi service, okay? So they will pick up the person and the bicycle, they break down mentally or physically, we pick them up, if they're registered, okay? So if your town is shut down at three o'clock, we come through, and it's three-thirty right now, and we say, hey, got any riders left? It's three-thirty, we've been shut down a half hour, just making sure, that sag wagon's going to be to the next town, and someone comes out of the bar and says, hey, is the sag wagon going to come by again? Well, it's three forty-five, and they were through here a half hour after shutdown time, you're on your own, okay? And we're, we're going to be cold like that, but you know what, we've got to worry about the people that are doing it right. So we'll pick up people along the route that are doing it right, bring them to the overnight town, and come back out. So six o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night, we have four of these wagons that run that can hold fifteen bikes at a time, and on big days, that when they're really long days, we might have some more vehicles out there, the day, obviously, from Canandaia to Crestonville, very long day, very lily day, so we might have some extra support there. So this is typically what they are, now, I can tell you right now, our sag drivers will come into town and eat your best pie, and, and your ice cream and all that, they're good, healthy guys that have been with us for a long time, and they enjoy their pie and ice cream, so, I'm just seeing lots of those guys in town. If you have a website that goes in, it could be a Facebook page, plus a zero, put together a Facebook page for your event, or if you want to do a page, it could be a city page, if you want it, you tell us that link, we will put it on the Rag Ride page for your town, and if you've got a vending form that says, hey, food vendors that want to come in, it's three hundred and fifty dollars, here's our application, all that kind of stuff should be on your website, but things like, hey, we've got X, Y, Z band playing from two to four in our, in our park, we're going to have these thirty food vendors in there, everything from, from sweet corn to, to full pork to whatever, okay? All that kind of stuff should be up on your website or Facebook page, we will link it up on those pages in advance, so people can say, oh, wow, what's happening in this town? More, more and more information that you give us, the better, okay? So if you give us that link, we'll link it up, even if you give us a link one day and it changes, just share us an email and say, hey, TJ, can you, we've got a new link that, can you put that up for us? Riders are thirsty for information, okay? They want to know what's going on. There are people, especially in the meeting towns, their family may be meeting them for the day, so they're typically bigger towns, those meeting towns, make sure you have all that information up about what's, what's on, okay?
Excuse me?
Yeah?
I have a question before you go on to the next, on that sag wagon, does that come through just at the end when the town is officially closed down?
No, it'll be through all, all day, so at the very end, they will come and visit with some official person in town and say, do you have anyone else left we picked up? After the first time through, we're going to kind of get through your team. After the first time through, we're gonna kinda get their routine. Because sometimes they can actually drive through town, but you saw some of those pictures, there's no human possible way they'll drive through. So they'll kinda come to the edge of town, maybe a pool or go on the side street. It's very well-known of what that sag wagon looks like for riders. So there's typically a gathering spot, it could be a first aid station that's set up in a shady park, it could be a fire station, but once that first one, where those riders are gathering, they'll pick them up there and continue that until the shutdown time. So it could be three, four hours that they'll be coming through your town.
Yeah.
All right, good question.
Well, I'm up here at Oceola.
Okay. We may have a few friends at RagRide that may decide, hey, we wanna be in your town. If we have, I know we've got an ice cream vendor, David Stennis had a tip in, just different ones like that. Obviously, Nicola Voltr is in the other room, talking about, you know, beer gardens. If there are some friends at RagRide, that would pay the vending fee to be in your town, but we can just say, hey, you know, just give them a good spot and all that, because they're helping out the whole RagRide thing. There's very few. There are, I can tell you right now, there are no official RagRide vendors whatsoever. So anyone that says, we're an official RagRide vendor, or we're in every town, you need to have us in your town, you decide who's in your town. There are no official, we don't make money off RagRide vendors. It's all yours, and it's all the decisions are yours. So if you say point blank, you know what? Great example is Pella, a couple of years ago, pretty good sized town, they said, we are just gonna have only people from Pella serve food in our town, period. And then people are like, well, you can't do that. Yes, you can, okay? And they did an amazing job, had some of the best, you know, baloney and all that kinda stuff that you've ever seen in your entire life. So don't be afraid if that's what you wanna do in your town. Say, we're gonna keep it to ourselves and our local vendors, that's fine. If you want the outside dollars, I mean, that's kinda the give and take. Most of these people are professional vendors, okay? So they come in from the outside, and they wanna set up in your town and pay the three hundred or four hundred dollars, and follow your rules, okay? You need to be set up by this time, you need to provide proof of insurance, and it's X amount of dollars. The towns, riders patronize the towns, okay? There's a lot of vendors that set up in the rural aspects of it. They know what they're doing, they've been on the ride a long time. Most riders are gonna ride town to town. They're gonna patronize the towns. So for anyone that says, hey, we're an official RagRide vendor, we're always this or always that, it's not true. Now, the logistics of this year's RagRide is a lot different than other RagRides. We have a short route, first of all, four hundred and twenty miles. Sounds like a lot if you don't ride a bicycle. There are a lot of fifty mile days. When you have a fifty mile day, it scrunches the opportunities for other vendors. So the towns are gonna do very well when you have a minimal amount of towns on a day. The other thing is, we have a lot of ups and downs on this route. So if you've got an uphill and a downhill, if you're on a downhill as a food vendor, you are out of luck, okay? So half the route is downhill, half the route is uphill. And then once we hit towns, it flattens out, sort of, and there's a lot of food vendors in those towns. But if you're on an uphill, you've got a chance to get people to stop. Once they crest that hill and start going down like that, there's nothing in the world that can make that person stop and get off no matter what. You can have a sign, free beer, and they're just gonna go right by it because they're not in that ring, okay? And then the smart people are gonna try to push up the next part of the hill. So if you're at the bottom of the hill, no chance, okay? So all those vendors that try to be in between towns, we've got slim pickings this year, okay? Mike, you been out on the road, do there's slim pickings out there?
A couple of days, they're a little slim.
So that means those vendors are gonna go to your town and say, we'd like to set up in your town. There might be some people that say, we'll come in and set up everything for you, okay? We can bring all these vendors in. We bring thirty vendors with us, and if you don't work with us, you're not gonna get anyone. You hold all the cards, okay? So don't let anyone come in and say, we'll set up your town for it. You can do it, just what I showed you today. Line up the vendors, and when we come into town, you can come into your town and visit with them and say, show us your setup. How are you gonna set up vendors? Where's your stage gonna be? Where's your portable toilets gonna be? We can help you with any of those types of issues to make you be as successful as possible. So don't, when you get a pitch from someone that says, oh, I'll bring thirty vendors into your town, you'll have as many vendors as you want, yeah?
And what are the rules that setting up behind incorporated areas?
Unless your county has got an ordinance, you can only control things within your city limits. So unless your county's got an ordinance that says they can't set up in a certain area, if they're selling alcohol, this county has to sign off on it, period. Food and stuff like that, they gotta have a state food permit, which is thirty-three fifty, and then unless you have an ordinance that says you can't set up, as long as they got permission of the property owner, they can set up, okay? So the city cannot control things in the county. Yes?
It might be something you might wanna bring up to your county people?
Right.
Because I know we had a 911 emergency for RagRide, county people, some of the board supervisors, you know that? And that way, not only does it help people right outside in front of your town, but then the board supervisors and the sheriff's department and all that can set them up where the safety, there's less of a safety issue. Right, same way you can have ordinance.
Yeah, and, you know, sometimes we really don't want a county ordinance, because you know what, there's some safety factors involved. We want people out there selling drink, okay? If there's a stretch, say there's seventeen miles or twenty miles in between in town, we need to have vendors in between them, because the food and drink, it's hard to ride a bike fully, twenty miles in between, and then some of the towns we have are, you know, three or four hundred people, which it's hard to sell to twenty thousand people. So we do need to have some of those vendors in between. Now, if you're the first town and within your county, you know what, we're in the first six miles, and the county line is seven miles, well, there probably needs to be a vending ordinance there, that makes sense. We just don't wanna have twenty miles that people are shut out and can't get food and drink, because it does become a safety issue. So a lot of counties might not pass that, but I can tell you this, riders will patronize the towns more than anything else, okay? If you give them a reason to stop, they'll stop and get off their bike and patronize your town. And riders eat an incredible amount of food on RagRide. So just because it's not breakfast, lunch, dinner, it's breakfast one, breakfast two, breakfast three.
You're riding so much, too.
Ice cream pie, lunch one, lunch two, lunch three, okay? So there are people that will stop, and places in between your town can stop in every town. So just kinda keep that in mind. You're gonna get the business you want at your reasonable price, and do these types of things to get them off your bike. So let's do this, I think, are we ready out there, John? For, looks like we're getting pretty close to lunchtime.
She's really.
We definitely know, we've gotta waste of travel after meetings, we gotta try to keep on scheduling, so. Next up, Benham here, that we're on the other side, Lieutenant Schaefer already, but State Patrol's been involved with RagRide for forty-plus years. He worked with a couple of different factions, State Patrol worked with a couple of different factions of their law enforcement along the way. Lieutenant, talk a little bit about State Patrol and their role on RagRide.
Thanks TJ. Can everybody hear me all right? All right. Again, my name's Dan Schaefer, I'm a lieutenant with State Patrol, I'm normally stationed in Mason's City Island, but with the RagRide, I am the resident officer that are assigned to RagRide, get attached, and get work with the event. We have two groups that go on. We have our safety education officers, so there are between ten and fifteen officers that go on and help with traffic control, and they concentrate on the heavier, harder intersections for the bikes to get across. Some of your towns may have traffic control assistance from the State Patrol, others may just have local officers and county networks. Our safety education coordinator's name is Scott Wright, he's a sergeant, and he's stationed out of our headquarters building. Somewhere soon, you should be, if you have not already started to do so, you should be thinking about how traffic's gonna go, bike routes and things through your communities. If you have questions about, am I gonna get assistance with traffic control from the State Patrol, reach out to Sergeant Wright. Headquarters, our general headquarters number is five oh five, seven two five, six zero nine zero. Call down, ask, speak with Sergeant Wright, and he or one of the safety education officers from your area will be in contact with you and be able to discuss that. Their group takes care of that. Their group works for probably four thirty in the morning till six thirty in the evening. There are four other officers that accompany the ride, and I'm in charge of that group. We're all, the four of us are volunteers for the ride, but we make up an enforcement team that comes out, and we work probably about one o'clock in the afternoon until three or four in the morning. So we're being our safety education officers, when we're coming in, we're telling them they're leaving for the day. But what we do, we have two factions, or two duties for the event. The first part is to help get the ride in the big party crowd from one overnight community to the next by six P.M. That's a pretty tough route when you're talking about three thousand or plus people that wanna go out and party. And those are the people that are gonna straggle in your communities to get to the next overnight town. Had quite a discussion with your people in the other session, but I would say this, if you folks can help us, it makes the ride feel much, much smoother. RagRide's determined a shutdown time for your services in your community. Please, please listen to that shutdown time and shut your services off at that time. And I'm not just talking about shutting the beer garden down, having us ask your bars to close, because that alone does not do it. You're gonna have people contact you as vendors, you're gonna have community groups that wanna set up stands. All of those services need a shutdown at that shutdown time. Even if you haven't seen us, even if we're not there yet, if you haven't seen us, that's probably even more of a reason to get shut down at that time, because the ride's falling behind. The vendors will push to stay open at that shutdown time, because they've just got a couple more pieces to serve, can we sell these? We've got twelve more turkey dinners to adopt, can we serve these? Let them know upfront, let them know what we pour, hey, this, our time's coming. But if not, you're gonna get huge groups of riders in your communities, and they're gonna cause problems down the ride, or down the road for the ride, because they'll be coming in very, very late. Just can't handle that, because at six P.M., all the traffic control is gone. In fact, after your shutdown time in your communities, the services are pushing passive, so you won't have the ambulance services that RagRide has offered, you won't have the traffic controller that comes with it, and it taxes your local emergency services. So I'd ask, consider how you're gonna get your vendors to close up when it comes time for your shutdown times. My suggestion is, if you close the street off, you have everybody on that street as vendors, people go to where the vendors are at. Open the street up at your shutdown time. They have to, because then they're blocking traffic. But consider how you wanna address that, because it's very, very important to have that ride flowing smoothly. And it's not the first twenty thousand person. They say ten thousand riders, and it's actually closer to twenty each and every day that are gonna come through your communities. It's not the first fifteen thousand riders that we deal with, it's the last five thousand or so. And trust me, it's hard to ride for them as it is the first fifteen thousand, but they will ride back on the path, and if your town has their celebration going on, they will stay until the celebration's over, and it creates a very dangerous situation. So I'd ask for your help on that. We truly are there as volunteer services on my team, we wanna help you. My number is, and I'll give you my cell phone number, it's six oh one, two three one, twenty-seven hundred. My name's Dan Schaefer, and I'm a lieutenant at Mason's City with State Patrol. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call. I get calls all time of day or night. If I don't have the answer, I'll find the answer and get it to you. But again, we rely on your help to do our jobs, and we'd like to be there to help you in years. I know they talk about railroad crossings, what you can do to make those safer, and I would defer questions such as that to TJ, because he rides a bike, I'm the one in the car with the air conditions. This is from Beliski here. I will leave with one, one small story. Venus to your Asper's, right? Everybody's heard of Beliski and the Venus Asper's. Now, I work in my district on North at Interstate Thirty-five at the Minnesota border. One of the troopers up in my area, and this was just two or three days ago, stopped the car, he sent me a picture of it, stopped the car for a hundred and three miles an hour, and a gentleman was in a hurry. He was in a hurry to get to Beliski to go ghost hunting. That was his claim of fame. He carried a mask to keep him safe while he was ghost hunting, but, so I've been thinking of you folks in Beliski.
Thanks, Dan. We're gonna bounce around a little bit, not too much, but I think we're gonna go right to Laurel, and... You got a question?
I have a question. What do you have to help the bar offer? When you shut down, you have a private service, is it you or them?
Well, like, we asked the town to shut down, and what they're gonna ask is those local bars to cooperate, to help get riders through, okay? And so, again, they're gonna ask them, you know, nicely, hey, we wanna get some riders down the road. And most people, you know what, Lieutenant and his team have got a nice way of talking with riders, and they've developed a nice rapport that runs pretty smoothly, all right? And to be honest, most of those bars, by the time that's shutdown time, they're gonna say, get these people out of my bar, all right? I'm tired, I'm tired, I'm gonna go home, I'm gonna rest and count my money, all right? So, all right. Another question before we wrap up? Okay, so, a couple of years ago, we had a young lady that wrote me and said, hey, I'm a little concerned about some of the recycling that we see on RagRide. And she had mentioned a few things, and showed me some really poor examples of not being good stewards of the land and recycling. And so I said, Laurel, would you come and talk to the committee, since you ride every year and you see things out there? And she said, yeah. So that was a couple of years ago, and I think she was back in high school then, I think she's going off to college this year. But the last couple of years, Laurel Stelter from Pella's been coming and talking to the groups, the old high towns and the pastor towns about recycling. So she's come over from Pella's this afternoon to talk about recycling on RagRide, and I'll get your presentation out of those. Thanks, Laurel.
All right, so as TJ said, I'm Laurel Stelter, and I'm a senior in high school from Pella. And three years ago, oh, I've been doing RagRide for six years with my family, and three years ago, I'm on the RagRide, I started noticing that there was a problem, and that problem was that there wasn't hardly any recycling on the long route, and there's a lot of riders, from like fifteen thousand to, I know that one time, I think, when I went to Des Moines, there was closer to fifty thousand riders, and with little recycling, that's a lot of plastic waste produced by riders. So I decided to do something about it, and so, long story short, here I am. So again, this is what a lot of the containers looked like while I was going, while I was riding through towns about four years ago. Some reason to recycle is to reduce waste, and then there's lots of benefits from recycling your bottles, and also it's a great fundraiser for your town or for organizations in your community. To get started, I would contact your local recycling center, if that's a route that you're wanting to take, and use some containers from them, or decide on a container that would work best for your town, and I'll show you a few to get some ideas. Another important factor in recycling in your town is finding someone that can take care of the waste. So a good group that I've So a good group that I've found that deal with recyclables a lot are the Boy and Girl Scouts, or there's church groups, or school organizations that set up the containers, empty the containers when they need to be emptied, and then take them down and take them to the recycling center. Some important things to keep in mind are, again, emptying containers. When this happens, it looks pretty bad, and then more containers just don't get recycled. So it's important to make sure that you're emptying the containers where it's busy. There's like, where there's more bikes coming through, make sure you're getting those containers emptied frequently. Also, the placement is super important. As I always tell communities, it's important to keep the trash bins and the recycling bins next to each other so that way it's easy for riders to find where to put their recyclable bottles. As you see in the steamboat picture, the containers were pretty far away. It just didn't need to be. In other towns, I've seen that they're way spread out. But just keep it like that way and put them right next to each other so that way it's easy to find where the containers are. Again, with placement, these containers in Duncan Combe, they were great containers. They just were in the wrong spot. They were kind of in the back of an alley, and so they really didn't get very much use out of them. But they definitely could have if they were in a good place. Labels are also really important. If there's not labels, then that can make riders kind of confused on where they put their bottles. And when they're confused, then that results in mixed trash, which is not what we, not what we want. And the, like, the picture right there of Kingsley, the label of it is kind of a dumpster bin. And so it's kind of small, and the bike is blocking it. So as you can see below, it also resulted in mixed trash. This is a picture of me with a recycling container about four years ago, and I was kind of upset about the lack of recycling, as you can tell on my face. And so the fence idea, I thought it was a great idea at first, and then I came to realize that it really wasn't because while you would think you could fill it up so high and put all the bottles in there, when it came down to emptying the container, the bottles would all fall down to the ground, and it would kind of be a mess to pick up. So it really wasn't the best option. Another example of the fence, it had a great label on it, but it really just didn't get used very much. And here's another example in Monroe a few years ago. It was kind of in the back of a, of a park, and no one saw it, and bikes blocked it. So it really was kind of a waste of space. And another example of poor labeling. This container, since it's a cylinder-shaped, it, they only had one label on it. So riders could only tell from one side what kind of container it was, and so that resulted in mixed trash. This container also had just one label, and it was low to the ground. And typically, you're looking above at a container, not so much to the side. So this resulted in mixed trash as well. Another example, the cans and bottles, that was just one sticker on the container. So again, only visible from one side, while the other container didn't even have a label, and it was the trash, so they both had mixed trash in them in the end. In this town, they tried something new a few years ago, and that was to make the recycling bins blue and the trash yellow. However, maybe that made sense to the community, but the riders had no clear idea of what blue versus yellow meant. And so it was mixed trash in that town as well. At this town, they had no labels on their bins. Again, they were trying to do, a different container was trash, and then cardboard box meant recycling. However, the riders did not catch on to that because there are no labels on the container. And so, as you can tell, mixed trash again. And here's another example of poor labeling. I know that maybe some of your communities may be going to single stream recycling. And in my town, I have containers like these for recycling and trash. And they're, I think they're great for the communities, but once you pull them out to RagBra riders who may not be familiar with these containers, it just doesn't work the best. It's kind of hard to tell because there's only one label, which is on the very top of the lid, and those containers are kind of tall. So it, it looks like a trash bin because I didn't have, I didn't have a single stream recycling at the time as others. So it looked like another trash bin to me. And I think other riders saw that as well, since there's both trash and recycling in the container. Now to the good examples. The, this on the left, the picture is from Mason City a few years ago. They took old refrigerator boxes and stamped them and put them all down their beer garden. So it was easy to tell where the pop-in beer cans went. And then also, on the right, is Parkersburg. And they also did a great job. They made their container really bright green, which is awesome, and put plastic bottles on it so it was clear as to what to go into the container. This is a cardboard box that I made when RagBra went through Pella three years ago. And since I'm from Pella, I decided to make a Dutch building. And so it's kind of, yeah, just make it a little fun if you want to. And then another one that I made from Pella was out of a watermelon box, and I just painted on it and used it. Also, there's, a couple of years ago, there was a cam trailer used from a trailer. So I thought that was kind of fun with the Iowa theme. And it was just in the beer garden, and it got a lot of use as well. This idea was kind of cute a couple of years ago. It had a little monster, and then it said Feed Me. And it was also really great because the truck would just be able to haul all the bottles direct to the recycling center. And if you're looking to provide a little competition, this idea was also very fun, to put bottles into a wagon and make a little competition with a basketball hoop. And they also had really great labels that were bright and gold. So now for the three best containers. This one, I put as number three. This was originally number one last year, but I moved it down. And this container was great because there's green and then there's white, and so it's clear to tell the difference between the two bottles, or me, excuse me, the containers. And this was from Waste Management. And as you can see, the inside of the containers, it was crystal clear that one side was plastic and one side was trash. The second best container is the removable bag with the lid one. I don't know what to call it. But it's really great because it's clear that the plastic bottles going in, because it has holes for the plastic bottles. And also, it's easy to transport the bottles once they've been put in the container. However, the best container I found all throughout RagBra was this container, the 55-gallon barrel drum, that's what it's called. The drum with the holes shaped out in the middle. This was really clear to all the riders that the plastic bottles and cans go into the, the container with the holes on top, and then the trash went right next to it. And here's another example of a few. So as you can see, they made a big wooden top and put it on top of a container. So it's clear that the bottles went through the hole, and then, as well as the one in Alden, which was just out of cardboard, so a little bit different. And I think you all have included in your packet of materials is some reminders on recycling. Yeah, just to keep in mind while you're thinking about how to provide recycling for your town. Are there any questions?
I think you covered it. So Laurel will be in the ride this summer, and you don't want your town to be like highlighted in the background. And it wouldn't look good. So I would listen to what she's saying and, you know, look at the tip sheet inside your book. And again, if we all just do those little things, we can do a lot. There will be riders that make comments to you and do recycling. So, and you don't want to be in her pictures. Thanks, Laurel. All right. We're going to, hold on a second. We're going to get Mike set up in a second, but...
I've got some people to work here, and I think there's 120 cameras at each. The white sheet that'll be on that you're being given is an article that was from Citiescape last August. It happens, I hope everybody can carry without the mic at the moment. From Citiescape last August, it had an article about how towns are impacted by this. Citiescape is the League of Municipalities Magazine. It, I didn't see this until yesterday, and so I copied it. It features Ashen, and it also features, features Manson, where it from.
I'm going to give you the mic now, so. Well, I'll let, I'll let Mike talk. One thing I think is really important, I mean, you heard me talk for, you know, two hours this morning, but I wanted to give you a real-life experience. Manson was the first-year town last year. Now, Mike had experience in making several other RagBra towns, so he had a good reference point. But I think Manson did a fabulous job asking questions. It was the first time down they came to this meeting, test room, a lot of the food, and all that kind of stuff. So we're going to let Mike talk, and then we're going to be able to ask him a bunch of questions of, because he was in your seat last time. And Manson took a lot of, a lot of feedback and a lot of things, and they had a superb July. So, you ready, Mike?
We really did have a good experience in Manson. I was not at the meeting last year, but the first meeting that I ever attended for a pass-through town was when I was chair, and Jim Green back there was the chair, he didn't eat us lunch. So our experience differed. There's a couple of things that, this is the fun part, really, to give you some real-life experiences of what we have. When you, as you do your stuff, you need to involve all your volunteers if you possibly can. Brainstorm, bring people in, use your city council. One of the first things you may have to decide is how are we going to find it? Who's going to run the money? I've got experience with a town in northeast Iowa, a town of Ashen. We decided that the chamber group or the crowd club was going to run the organization. We invited every nonprofit organization to participate. And in that case, 18 groups in town came together. They had to provide cinnamon rolls, they had to provide volunteers. And then we put, at the end of the day, we had all the income going to one pot, and we had all the money divided equally among all groups. That is a model that I really like. It didn't work in, it was discussed in Manson. I've got notebooks, if you want to look at how we organize things in Ashen, I can do that. But the things that you folks do becomes very critical in terms of bringing your community together. With Right Ride, there are winners and there are losers. You don't want to have half the organizations in your town begrumbling afterwards. The range of things in Manson, there was one group that was a block and a half off the, off the route. We were very concerned about it. They, in, in the end, ended up probably being one of the biggest winners because they did a good job of promoting their town. As people are coming, they had signs out. One of the things they did was they served handballs. When I looked at the list of food that people liked, handballs wasn't listed as an option. It was a different sort of food. When we did the pre-ride, the writers referred to that as, the experienced writers that came through with the pre-ride referred to that as candy meat or meat candy. They talked about a couple of other things, and the Methodist Church there took a theme of, instead of eat more chicken, with the beef from the Chick-fil-A, they had the chicken, kid dressed up as a chicken with his head hair done up bright. And he was on the street saying, eat more pork, one block, eat more pork. So I want to encourage all of you to be creative in how you can do things. One of the things we did that received comments was, and we'll go along, we'll see some of these in a little bit, is we had signs that said information. Now, some of these signs were hand-painted on the way into town. Others were vinyl letters that we put on top of vinyl. The people that were in charge of that, as our committee people said, you know what the cost of vinyl is? And this is where I'm going to, first step, I'm going to say how to be creative. The bank I worked for has 20, 26 locations in Northwest Iowa now, and they talked about the vinyl. Well, every, every, twice a year, we have a checking promotion. Now, this may not look like much, but if you flip it over, it's free vinyl. You can paint your sign on it, you can turn it. For information, we had it going this way. The other, the other prop that I'll bring that I've got, it's against the wall. No, this other one. And then, we, we did these in 1993. We were trying to figure out how to get people from Decorah to Ashen for breakfast. And we brainstormed a little bit, and we said, we need signs along the road. There were 15 killer hills between Decorah and, or, excuse me, five killer hills between Decorah and Ashen. And we needed to encourage people. So we took signs, an example of the sign that we took, all of ours happened to be Terry Branstad signs. We didn't think he was going to run for election again. But it would be like, signs like this, whether you know it or not, you take those signs, and you flip it around. Here's one for someone that ran for county attorney. You flip it around, you still have the wires, and we had a paint party and painted signs so many miles to Ashen in that case. You know, we're, we're in an election season. There are three people running against, running on the Democratic side to run against Chuck Grassl. There's going to be two losers. I don't know whether they're going to use signs like this or they're going to use the plastic cardboard signs that, that it's easy to take the sign and do that. But be observant of what you can do without spending your money. That, that's one of the messages. So where's the power, where's the... Okay, or I'll add, the other thing I'll do is I did my thumb drive, but I couldn't, I couldn't arrange it.
You want to go that way?
Let's go that way. If you want to go back and look at, most of the pictures that I've got on this thumb drive, and it's not a PowerPoint format, but if you want to go back to look at any of these pictures, I'd say go back to Manson RagBra Facebook page. You can Google it. I couldn't find, I didn't know where it was, but I know that TJ found it. And so yesterday, I thought, wow, I don't even know what I'm saying with, with all the pictures. So, okay, there's, there's our three signs. The other thing with this picture... Let's see, are we on the first one? No, we need to back to the first one. There we go. That, that, get that one. Let's just put one, one, one. Okay, number two more. Maybe I'm down to the wrong one. It's the picture of three people. Okay, let's start here. The other two people on the side of me, they're the people that were really supposed to be here today. But I'm sure like all of you, they're busy people. Penny was our secretary, co-chair, chief of the written records. She's on one side of me. Dave Anderson is on the other side of me, on the blue sheet. You've got, I've got their... You've got, I've got their names and my name. I've got their cellphone numbers. You can, if you have questions or you want some feedback or some things, give them a call or text them and they'll get back to you. Penny and Dave don't know that I told you that, that I tell you this. I'll tell them tomorrow that the economic development we need in Manson. That they might get some phone calls from me. Dave is a fireman. We don't have really good pictures of it, but one of the issues we faced was electrical supply for our vendors and our outside vendors. We were a lunch town. And so, we didn't have enough, when we brought electrical people in, we didn't have enough power. We spent eleven thousand dollars to hook wire where we needed to do it with hookups and three panels. In Colfax, I were a head experience. We rented a commercial generator. I think the commercial generator would be a little bit cheaper. If you wanna try, check out the electrical aspect of it, contact Dave. I didn't say that you might be able to rent it from us, but I know where they're at, his garage. And the city ended up subsidizing Rag Right to the tune of seventeen hundred dollars. Part of it went for those electrical boards. Because we can use those with Greater Crater Days, which is a community celebration. And we can use them with Chili Feet Downtown after the fall. These are state of the art stuff, because they've got circuit breakers. They've got the, each of the outlets has the weather cover that you're required to have if you're building things to code today. So, involve your electricians early on in the process. Let's go forward. That's a sample of our signs. This one's rather dark, but there's, you can see there's three bikes. We collected bikes in the spring that people wanted to throw away. Have four H clubs repaint them, is part of their involvement. We eventually strung them, we hung them on the light posts. This one happens to be our tallest bike rack in town. The best bike rack was at the next intersection with tractors with cables for people to hang their bikes, going both directions at the intersection. Because you need lots of space, lots of room to hold and to have your bikes. Okay, let's go back. There we go. This was our logo. And current, you know, one town, maybe wanna have imitation Ax murder. I don't know if that would go over well. Manson, if you look at the article, happens to be the largest meteorite impact in the state, in the United States. So, we have the theme of cruising the crater to tie in something local. So, figure out what's unique in your community if you can tie it in. Now, when people got to town, they said, where's the crater? And then we told them, they've been in the crater for eleven miles. The crater is twenty-two miles wide, which creates another issue for us within the town. A lot of people are very dependent upon their cellphone. Because of the crater and because of the county lines in Manson, Verizon signal stinks. I used to tell my parents when I drove from Fort Dodge to Manson, if I was talking to my mother on the phone, by the way, if the signal breaks up, I invented the Manson crater. If I wanted to hang up, I could do that. So, that was unique. Then we developed these T-shirts, but I'm wearing one today. That was part of our fundraising. It creates excitement within the town. Other things you can do, and I've got a sample of it in one of my supplies there. Probably it's a white folder. In nineteen ninety-nine, when I came to the first meeting, there was a town that talked about pins. And we ordered these pins from California. They said, they only sell these bike pins to Iowa. They had more requests from Iowa than anything else. I've got a sample, one of these has a sample. But these are little plastic pins. If you wanna, if you wanna look at it for an idea, go to a thing, a website called Stick Em Up. S.T.I.C.K.E.M.U.P. The company was selling them then, they're selling, they're still in, or nineteen, or 2014, they were still in business. If you buy a hundred of them, they're fifty cents each. At the time that we did this in Ashen, they cost about twenty-nine cents and we sold them for a dollar. That was to get people involved and get people excited about bike rides, so they wear their pin to church. If you look, you know, they, on the website, they sell them for two night, or not, two dollars basically. In Ashen, we spent a hundred and eighty dollars on pins and we generated six hundred and ninety dollars worth of income. So, our profit was better than four hundred dollars off these bike pins. That paid for the garbage removal, would be one way to think about it. This is our, these are some people from our committee and their kids for our Greater Crater Days to create some excitement, to sell some T-shirts, to recruit volunteers. And that's your biggest task. We got, we rode in the parade, we had kids sitting on pedal, stationary bikes, pedaling on a float. We had other bikes going in and around to create some, to try and recruit some volunteers and then we sold things. We had a blast doing that and we took away candy. Here's a couple of pictures of a pre-ride outside of our, not nearly as many people as you're gonna find in the ride. The pre-ride is a good way to test what you're going to do. The pre-riders will come in and give you some feedback. We had all the, all the local vendors, the school, the churches, the school, the local restaurants, bring in samples. This is the Methodist with their hand models and pie. One thing about the Methodist that I would tell you, everybody talks about pie in this ride, pie, 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 pie. And everybody thinks it's homemade pie. The Methodist is a small church. They don't have all that many volunteers, or they do, but, you know, to add pie making to it, because they weren't homemade, they were home baked. We made an arrangement with the grocery store to go buy, to get the large pies and people baked them. And so, if resources are a problem, that's an option. Pie sold at state fair prices for four dollars a slice. I don't care to pay four dollars for a slice of pie when I can buy a whole pie for a little bit more, but go ahead, we'll just flip through a couple of these. These, this is the school, they sold pork burgers and I forget, Gatorade and we'll just flip through these. This was one of the restaurants that was promoting their things. We got feedback in terms of whether this is some, all of these things were, were things bike riders would eat. The Lions Club, I forget what they did, ultimately they didn't participate. The other thing I'll give you a warning about, you're gonna have Naggy Nellies in your community. There's nothing you can do right to Naggy Nelly. One of the people with, one of the people with Lions Club was a Naggy Nelly. Even when we went and marked off the street for the booths, she came up with, and we had still had cars on Main Street on Sunday night when we were trying to do it. So, you're, some of the marks are at an angle to get where you're at. Naggy Nelly came and measured it and it was six inches off. We gave her the other six inches and it came from where we were putting the garbage. This is another restaurant. This restaurant, they did not do the signs coming into town. They were at the end of our first block and they complained that they didn't get the business they wanted. They were doing a pasta bar, you gotta promote what you're doing. You gotta get the message out to the riders, otherwise they're gonna find something else to eat. Both for this and then Rag Right, we had information about our crater. So, if you have things that are special in your community that are unique, we even brought in a person by the name of Ray Anderson. He's a geologist that's an expert on it. Not all these people are beer drinkers and just partiers. Some of these people are really along for education. He had a line of people listening to him all day, wanting to learn about that. Other people would just ask questions. In the top picture, I have two fears that I had to over, but I have one fear that I had to overcome twice with the ride. I hate heights. So, in the upper picture, we're hanging bikes from buildings. Because we were a little slow getting it, I hopped in the basket and Dave, after we're hanging the first one from a light pole, he says to me, yeah, fear heights. Yeah, what are you doing up there? We gotta get this done. So, I don't like the colors on that picture. But that's an example of what, we hung them in the rafters that overhang the Main Street. One of the things we discovered there was the condition of those rafters, they need to be replaced. Okay, there's, there's, there's a picture of Main Street. The grocery store that's off to the left, we had trouble convincing the grocery store owner to stay open. He sees bikers as thieves and all those things. And I can assure you, all these people are professionals. These are the classiest people in the world. He didn't wanna stay open and he was gonna close. He finally did and then he was selling, you know, grapes or, he finally figured out how to package grapes in small units to sell to bikers. But he also let us use his parking lot. So, the Rag Right people were in the tent right in front of his parking lot. Our information tent was there. And the University of Iowa hospitals that had their mobile hospital come to Manson was next door and the people in the hospital said, rock his business. He didn't care. He was fine with it. It made it easy for the riders to find that. Across the street from that, we had the bike shops. And that was about the first thing that came into town. If you flip over your map, or flip over that blue sheet that I have, I have two things. Too many maps. If I can borrow yours a second. It kinda shows the route, is on the left-hand side, it shows the route how they came into town. If we chose not to have Rag Right come to town, they could have easily gone down the county blacktop and picked up Highway Seven and we wouldn't have seen anything. The other thing, at the north end of town, we have fairgrounds where our swimming pools are and the athletic fields are. There was some discussion of having that, having stuff there. The better decision was to have everything in one central location downtown where the commercial businesses could get stuff, as well as an ATM is there, as well as we could set up our things. And then at the south end of town, there's two convenience stores. So, if they're leaving town, they can easily find them. There was one bar in town that he chose not to open that day, which helped the firemen that were having the beer tanks. The other map kinda gives you an outline of how we did things and it shows you where the Methodist Church was in relationship to things. They did a really good job of getting people. Did I say what their profit was? Six thousand dollars off of one stand. Now, keep in mind, it's a small church that operates on a shoestring budget. I spent five hundred dollars for Rag Right, I got a T-shirt. Because I go to that, I attend that church and when they were saying, we don't, we don't have, I knew the finances, I, they were asking for money to pay for handball mix and ice cream and some of the supplies, so I kept making, get my tie in and then I gave money to help buy handballs every week for serious reasons. So, if you took that out, you probably could kept their profit down to four thousand or three thousand. One of the things that they did was, and this becomes, this was an article in the Marine Register, people of all cultures participate. There was a Muslim lady that went in there and I talked to the minister yesterday and I said, so did she eat the handballs? She had pie and I, a root beer float, which would have been dietarily fine. She had a great experience stopping and that's why some places try and sell all their food at one price. You're getting a homemade meal for a flat price. For past few towns, I would probably encourage à la carte. We got this bike wash from another town that had created it and we put it in the street. I don't get real excited about it, but we made use of it, it didn't cost us anything. There we are, doing the signs. This is the impact. But every time our committee got together, we sent out an email or a text message to everybody. When I first started this, you had to call people up and plan further ahead. Now you send a text message and everybody showed up. They brought their friends to our committee meeting. So, use the social media that's out there to communicate as well as you can. Water station. Did you talk about that this morning at all? Okay. At the end, at the end of our second block of the downtown area is where we had our water station. It was PVC pipe hooked to a water hose with several spigots. You really need to have that. I'm aware of one town that they, they didn't get the participation, they didn't do that. And they ended up having, you know, people complain because someone finally got a hose and they were controlling it off of the fire pipe. You gotta be able to fill several bottles of water. We're talking ten thousand people, probably three thousand people in town maybe at one time. Here's one of the hand payment signs. Hungry, pedal faster. And then the next sign, make an impact in three point one. We put these in a field that had terraces. I didn't, I didn't do it. My wife said, well, I helped paint that sign. Welcome, welcome people to town. This is a time to showcase your community. So, don't forget to welcome them. I think the next series of pictures, oh, here's an example of what the Catholics did. We did have a photo op with someone dressed as a stoplight. Manson is the only town in Calhoun County that has a stoplight. So, we looked at every opportunity to twist details. So, let's just back up, look at that. So, they promoted what they were doing, they promoted their location, it was easily identifiable. And they had the Sisters, the Sister Act on bicycles in their bag. So, photo ops is the next thing I will talk about. One of the things you wanna do is you wanna get people off their bikes. If you get them off their bikes, they're gonna walk, they're gonna buy food and help you, help you make money and have fun. You wanna talk to them. So, the Catholic Church brought the Pope in. He's a cardboard Pope and he didn't serve Rag Right. They'd be looking for donations so they can buy him the Pope. This was one at the Methodist Church that people could stick their heads in. And people really do do this stuff. This was one by the Economic Development Committee. When the pre-ride came through on the southwest corner of town, at the intersection that the bike riders didn't go to, we have a very big metallic sign with a folder that says, Manson Making an Impact. So, we had, we had, and we had meetings about this, on designs, of how we wanted to do that, to bring that into town. And then a high school art teacher that is really giving back to the community and very talented to the paint, paint design. and very talented to the paint, paint design. Um, but again, people have opportunities, saying they made an impact in town. Uh, if you look at this one, you can see a kid in the middle of it, so there were two rows, and it was all plywood and wood to, to make it. We wanted to do some, we wanted to do a big sign over Main Street about the impact, but you gotta consider the weight and, uh, weather resistance and something like that. This is an early morning sign. I'm pretty sure they talked to you this morning about, be prepared for what ifs. What if it rains? And the bikers keep on going on down this, down the road? That's a risk, so what are you gonna do with your leftover supplies if that happens? Uh, the weather did clear off, the highway patrol let us, let the bars, they opened it out hour longer because they got a late start, so. But when the highway patrol comes to town, please cooperate with them. That, that ensures the future of this ride. It ensures that you have the opportunity this year to, uh, present your community. Uh, this one is just an early morning street sign. One of the things I would point out here, a- anybody see a problem with this, with this damage here? No, we had vendors close to close. It's the height of these signs at the table. Keep in mind, that street is two lanes wide. And once you get bikers coming through, it's a steady stream of people at this height with their bikes here, and they're walking through. They can't see those signs at the tabletop level. So get your sign, encourage your people to get your signs high. McDonald's doesn't put their signs low, Burger King doesn't put their signs low. There's a reason. So encourage people to get their signs high so that they can, people can immediately know what they have to sell and what the price is. Uh, other things you need to consider doing is, um, activities. We happen to have, this is not Right Right, this happens to be crater days, but we have two bathtubs that you fill with water, and we have bathtub races. Uh, we tried to do that, we did do that with Right Right. We borrowed it from the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we didn't get any pictures of, of it at Right Right. Our mistake there, so walk your, walk your route. We had a tent in front of it to get people to sign up for it. The tent should've been off to the side of the street, turned to the side, so that the riders could have visibility of the, of the, of the, of the thing going on. If they can't see it, they don't know it's there. This is an aerial view later on in the day when, uh, the riders are there. Uh, bike, the tractor came from a John Deere dealership, and that's what we used, had cables stretched out for the rides. Uh, I point that out because some of these people are, a lot of these people are from cities. They don't have a chance to look at tractors or antique tractors or antique cars. So think of things that are unique to your community that you can bring in to have, to help get people off their, um, their bike and, and take a look at. Their, their interests are gonna be very, very, varied. Um, I should, and another book here, uh, I've got it marked with a thing, is other things that you might consider. It made this picture, I'm clear off in the corner, very small, not as big as I am now. Uh, we also collected bikes for a, uh, toss a bike. In nineteen ninety-nine, getting back to the weather conditions, the weather was extremely hot. Bikers, Jim would confirm this, bikers were dropping out during the ride. Uh, even when we got to the lost and found stuff that was left at the end of the day, I called in, I says, "What do you wanna do with this?" And he says, "Normally, we'd come back to get it." But he says, "We're so overwhelmed with sag ride and trying to get people to the overnight town that, uh, we've got, we've got a major problem." So what if people started dropping out? Um, in Oshin Iow, we have two things that we, that I'll mention that, we had free ice from the, uh, turkey processing plant in Postul Iow. But we could load, we could load up, the night before, we went over there at ten o'clock and loaded livestock tanks with ice, so we had all the ice that we needed. That didn't cost us a dime. That particular year, uh, Kellmore Foods, which was the other direction from the town, is in, had an egg processing plant. We scrambled, had a scrambled egg thing, it's really scrambled egg, they call it an omelet, but it was scrambled eggs, and then you add your toppings, whether it was cheese and, and stuff for the breakfast. Kellmore Foods donated three hundred and fifty dozen eggs. That's a, that's a major savings in terms of trying to get to your profits. Uh, the Spotta Pots, there was a couple mistakes, we should've had a few more, uh, of the Spotta Pots by the grocery store, 'cause that was the thing that the bikers saw first, and then the lines were there, and down here, mm, the lines weren't quite so big. So think about your placement of those things. We ordered over forty, uh, Spotta Pots. Uh, our vendor on that, and, and he was, his name is, uh, I talked to him, 'cause he's a customer at the bank, and he said, "We, we needed about half as many as we, we had." But that decision was made before I became part of the organizing committee, so. This shows how crowded it can be, uh, working under the, under the tents, people working efficiently. Again, bikers are gonna sit anyplace, they're gonna rest anyplace they can. It's on the curb. At the Methodist church, there were, there was shade and open lawn. Yes, I picked up beer cans off the, the Methodist church parking lot afterwards. And, and the minister has no problem with it. She was more concerned about the comfort of the riders rather than. Uh, you can see here, you saw that picture early on where the street was empty? This kind of reinforces that, how do you see a sign at this level? Uh, what's that cover? Uh, this is near the grocery store, you see our information tent. And on the other side, you see the three bike, bicycle things. Don't forget about the bicycle shops and their garbage needs. We, they were very quick to point out, they needed something to throw their garbage away. We got them a dumpster, um, and it worked fine. Uh, it was mentioned about doing the, um, the refrigerator boxes. We had dumpsters, we had refrigerator boxes. We did have things decently marked with recycling. The consequences of, of not doing the recycling and not having enough garbage containers, is recycling becomes garbage containers. At the end of the day, when we have a picture here, one of the mistakes, that becomes a mistake because there was, it was mixed media, and it all in the, in the dump, uh, the garbage truck. So we didn't do as good a job. Uh, the picture of that person in the orange is Dave. And at the end of the day, one of the responsibilities for all of our committee members was to help clean up the garbage. So it was in piles on the street, we'll, we'll back it, go, we'll, we'll, go back one page. Uh, and we had fun as a committee doing that. Everything our committee did, we had fun doing it. We laughed about it, but picking up garbage can kind of be dirty. Dave's comment, and he's in the shirt, or the cutoff shirt there, he said, "You know, I have a real appreciation from our gar- for our garbage people now. They really work hard for what they do." Um, and keep, keep those things in mind of everybody that you're working with. Um, volunteers come from all over. A gal's standing next to me, she came from Altoona, she was originally from Manson. I went to church with her in Altoona, and, uh, she came home to help with this. Uh, back up that, we'll go back. Um, I was on stilts. Our intention was to also have, because of the crater things, there was a superhero that came to Earth on a, on a meteor strike. They, someone had the idea that we needed to have, um, superheroes moving the garbage. We rent, we rented ten costumes from a costume shop in Ford Dodge. I think only one kid wore them, um, because they were busy with the athletic boosters with their stuff, and once the street got crowded, there was no place for them to, to roll down their stuff. I came up with the idea, I had friends that have the costume, and I went and bought a pair of stilts, thinking in, I could walk on stilts. My age, I shouldn't have been doing that. Uh, I ended up standing by the, the tallest bicycle rack, and there was wire at the right level that I could hold on to and keep my balance. Don't be afraid of having your, your merchants hawk what they've got, particularly the local merchants. On the, on the, uh, when I was standing on the sign, and I'm sure the people with registered sounded like a broken record, but there's enough bikers coming through, "Welcome to Manson. Here's our tallest bike rack. The best bike racks are connected next intersection going either way." And people would stop, and they would want a picture of, uh, get, get their whole crew and, and the tall man. Uh, I s- I didn't get the stilts soon enough to learn how to do it. There was a biker after I, I did this all morning, there was, I was taking it back to my house. A biker asked about it, and I thought, "Good luck." He strapped him on, could walk across someone's lawn and back with no problem. If, if anybody's interested in bike, in, in the sheet rock stilts, I did bring them with me. They cost me a hundred dollars, and I had to assemble them, I will, they were used one day. I would be more than glad, if you're thinking of trying to do something like this, or you know someone that's a sheet rocker, I would be glad to sell them for a hundred dollars because I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna be walking down the street wearing. Uh, a couple more scenes. Uh, most of the rest of these, we don't, aren't, we don't need to, we're repetitive. We're back to the beginning. Yep, this works. Now, what questions do you have? 'Cause I covered a lot of things, and I've gotta find my note cards here somewhere. Make sure I covered, what questions, yes?
What did you do with all the bikes when you were done?
They became, oh, by the way, when we got them, they were piled up, and kids found out where they were at. So they were trading their bike for a better bike, then until we got them painted. So we eventually had to lock them up. When we, when we were all done, uh, they, they were sold for scrap now. 'Cause that's what, that's where they, that's what was gonna happen with them anyway. The people were gonna dispose of them with our recycling, that was it. Yes?
I have a question briefly about when everyone went together for the food fundraising in Georgia smaller.
Okay. And the first time we did that in ninety-three, um, I figured out the route ahead of time. I'd already reserved Chris Cakes. Now, keep in mind, Chris Cakes can help you feed a lot of people, but he charges so much ahead, so that would cut down on your profit. Um, the people that came to a meeting like this came back and they said, "This is how we want the town organized." And they persisted at that. Uh, in that, that year, both, both times, the Lions Club are not going. The American Legion had to provide more volunteers. And in the process, they became the traffic directors. They didn't have to provide cinnamon rolls, they didn't have to provide volunteers to work at the food stands. The other thing, and, and that, in that town, we had, uh, two pancake places, and then we had the scrambled egg place, both times that we did it. Uh, and then on the street, we sold clean foods, we didn't need electricity. Uh, we had a staging area where everybody the day before delivered their cinnamon rolls. We had the bananas, we had the Gatorade, we had the pop, uh, all stored in the law office, and that became the staging area. And then we supplied each of the, uh, food stands, we had three food stands on town, in town. They were all selling the very same product. So if you had lines in your food stand, you could encourage them to go across the lane and, and buy stuff at that food stand, 'cause they had the same stuff. When you ran out of cinnamon, or you were running low on cinnamon rolls, you went to the staging and sent someone to the staging area to get the food. Um, the town for breakfast, the profit the first year was eight thousand dollars divided by among about eighteen groups, so it was about four hundred and fifty dollars a group, and we overordered T-shirts. Someone got the concept that we would sell a thousand T-shirts. Every group got twenty T-shirts. So the Lutheran church that it belonged to at that time had the Luther League, the WELC, or the Ladies' Aid, and the church were all providing volunteers. So the church ended up with sixty T-shirts to get rid of for what, whatever, however you could get, however you could handle it. Um, you're gonna make mistakes. What do you do with leftovers? The classic case that I identified in reading in the Boeing Register going back to nineteen ninety-nine, most of the past through town, it was Manchester, they were the, they were the Friday night overnight stand. There was a Catholic church that had raised a lot of money for their building projects before, when they were there six years before, in nineteen ninety-nine. The heat, keep in mind, people are a lot like cattle. When it gets hot, you go to survival mode. I, I get my nutrition, and you quit eating, you're not gonna go four blocks to have, um, a turkey dinner. And someone wrote a letter to the register that said, "How come they didn't tell us that people were dropping out? How come we should've been forewarning, and they lost, they lost money on it?" Now, they should've had their plan, their what-if plan. What if people don't come? What if the weather changes? What do we do with our leftover product? Uh, in Manson, some mistakes, I think the first order, the first, uh, hog that was slaughtered for the pork producers or for the athletic boosters, they didn't get that meat inspected. They couldn't serve that. So think about, what are you gonna do if you don't do that? They had to have another hog, they had a lot of Gatorade that they could then sell in the fall. Some of the meat they had leftover, they offered. I called up, they had, they'd already sold out of their pork burgers before they were, before they were done. So, um, look, work with your vendors. The fireman had a beer tent in, in Manson, uh, to pay for the band, which was a local band. Uh, the last two out of the three years, we've had probably half the roofs in Manson replaced because of hail storms. So one of the roofing contractors offered to pay for the band. So that's another free source of income for, for them, but someone else paid for the band that they didn't get stuck with. Um, but the, the firemen had two reefers, or two refrigerated trucks filled with beer. They were planning to sell ten thousand cans of beer. They mainly sold a third of that. Um, and by the time you pay your, um, drag shop insurance and your licensing fee, you've got a thousand dollars that you spent right there. Um, in the year two thousand and one, I was in the city of Manson. Manson, or no, excuse me, Colfax. Colfax had two bad experiences with Right Right. The first time, it rained, and the bikers just kept on going down the road, so many of the groups made, and that was before I went to town. The second time I was in town, or I wa- I did live in, in Colfax, the organizers were focused on getting them to a particular bar that the chairman of the group owned, the organizing committee, so you gotta look beyond your own selfish interest. Uh, it was a narrow street, they had the vendors set up on, on the street, so you had about one lane of traffic for all the bikes to go through. A number of the food stands didn't do well. Uh, there was a gal that, uh, her, her church was a half block off. They also had, they were selling pie downtown. And, but she had a contingency plan, that they were gonna go to Kilduff the next day and sell pie, or their, their leftovers in the morning. When she came in the bank the next, later that day, I asked Ferdina how things went. She said, "I will never, 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 never in my life lift a finger to help Right Right get it." You don't want those experiences. Three years later, they're coming through Colfax again. They couldn't get the Catholics to get involved, they couldn't get the Methodists to get involved. Ferdina with the Christian church says, "I'm not doing anything. I already said I would never do this." The organizers had to go to all outside vendors for food. And then two weeks before, they finally convinced Ferdina to, uh, to do this. So you had the Methodists, the Catholics, and the Christian church go together. They prepared the stuff, people waited twenty minutes in line for those fresh cinnamon rolls to come out of the oven and be frosted. And Ferdina had a different view at that point in time. She says, "I was wrong." She says, "This is a great event. I was wrong. This was great because we had the Methodists, Catholics, and Lutheran people from our church working side by side in, in genuine fellowship." working side by side in genuine fellowship and having fun doing it." And that's why I encouraged that. In Colfax, because so many people on the board of the Main Street Organization, which is their chamber, had had bad experiences, it took three board meetings before they finally decided to set up a beer tent where we sold marmosets and Bloody Marys. And I was personally kept saying, "You know, we need to think about, we've already paid for our grand shop insurance. We've already got our license. We just need to pay a fee to expand our license a little bit." We did do that, and we made twenty-five hundred dollars. For a small town chamber organization, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars is a lot of money. So in Manson with the leftover beer, the vendors, the distributors took that back. I become a little skeptical because of social media, and this week at the bank I work at, we caught three scams. One of them was a customer pulling a scam, the other two were outside vendors through what I'll call a current list scam. So when people call you up, I become a little skeptical. The firemen were getting, or Dave was getting calls, "What brand of beer are you gonna serve at your beer tent?" And they had their preferences, they wanted the exotic beers rather than just the middle light, or who's the sponsor for Rag Ride? Budweiser, excuse me, I had the wrong beer. And they, so they were getting all these things. I become a little skeptical when I'm sitting on the outside going, "Were these distributors trying to get their beer sold in town? I don't know. They may have been legitimate requests." What other questions do you have?
This is, here's an aerial too of your town. And this is, I guess your race here, and this is a good area for you.
So in the first block, we have local vendors, where we had the vendors, was the local clubs and the local vendors. And in the second block was the outside vendors. There was one vendor, Ed, that I can't think of it, he sells jewelry. And he came to town, he met with Dave to kind of review how we were having things set up. And there will be riders that will come to your town and listen to what they have to say. They may have good suggestions for you. And Dave, or Ed, has a number of people that he, that he's been working with as these outside vendors. And so he has people he likes. If they have vendors among their vendor group they don't like, they don't get invited back to the group. And they had one that was in Manson that they said that he's not gonna be part of our group again. Okay, that's it. I haven't seen that one before. Other questions anybody might have?
You said that you had actually too many porta potties, and like half would have done you. How many do you have on hand or?
We had forty porta potties. Some of them were in the beer tent, there were about twenty in that one line. Keep in mind, when we did it in Oshin, Iowa, we counted all the restrooms and the restaurants, the fire station, the community center, any place that people could get easy access to in our calculation for how many we really needed. I know there's guidelines, but keep in mind that quarter mile outside of town, either direction, there's a porta potty there. It's called a cornfield. I personally don't like to go in those kibbles. A story from Oshin is, we were in the bank, there were some professionals that came and asked if they could see the Wall Street Journal. And one of them needed to use the restroom, we had just remodeled the bank, we weren't finished with the outside. And he went back to use the restroom and then he came out and he says, "St. Joe! You gotta come back here, you guys, they need the best restrooms we've seen all week." They weren't the kibbles. The people you meet on this ride, I understand it's politically incorrect to ask them what they do, but it's okay to ask them where they're from. Two, three, oh, one thing I got in here. If you're looking for something to do, you can take card stock and make postcards out of it. We had, in several, both communities that we've been actively engaged in, we had kids make postcards. And then they ask, right, we put the stamps on it. We ask them to send us some information about themselves or what their experience was in our town. The first ride, we got a letter back from, one of the people got a letter back from a person by the name of John Moran. Am I pronouncing the last name right? And his brother Mike. He sent a magazine from the New York City Fire Department. Keep in mind, there's enough people in the New York City Fire Department, they can have their own magazine. He sent a fire patch from the New York City Fire Department. He sent a letter describing what his experience was, and they sent a picture of him and four people. These people come to your town because of these experiences and they come back, and they come back. The New York City Fire Department had people that lived to come to Iowa for their vacation. That's what being Iowa kind is. And that's what your job is, is to show that Iowa kindness to people. The gal that got that was in middle school. Fast forward, ninety-three, two thousand and one, eight years later. Jim, what happened to John and Mike? On September eleventh, two thousand and one, John and Mike Moran died in the World Trade Center. Both of them died. We got a chance to meet them. They took pictures outside of, every town that had fire trucks out, they took pictures of those, of them standing in front of fire trucks. The gal that got the card, she struggled later on, she had a child on wedlock, some things like that. So she was really struggling. We knew that when the Des Moines Register came out and indicated they died, we went back to my records, I'm anal about that, and confirmed that that's who sent the stuff. I called the gal's parents, she was there, I talked to her, she went running up to her room. That event may have changed your life, because she is a productive person in that community. She went back and got her associate degree at the community college, and I can see that after that, she was a different person than she was before then. So this event changes people's lives. The other one was, happened in Manson that I was told about yesterday. People came to the beer tent, the gal that was, oh, by the way, with the beer tent, we didn't use those rolls of tickets. Keep in mind, they had support vehicles coming. We're told, I cannot affirm it, can confirm it, we're told that some of those support vehicles may have rolls of those mass-produced tickets in orange, green, blue, red, whatever color you might be using, and they can go back and... So not everybody's great on this event. So our firemen went the wooden nickel route. They were wooden nickels and they sold those in the process. So think about that. Where was I going?
Changing lanes.
Oh, well, changing lanes, okay. So this person came through and the gal selling the wooden nickels asked, "Where are you from?" And he says, "California. I grew up in Iowa." And she says, and she asked him if he'd been back, he's never been back since he graduated from high school, in more than forty years. And she asked him why he'd never been back. His lifestyle from the seventies, his lifestyle such that would not have been tolerated in the seventies, and he would have taken abuse. He doesn't know where Iowa has come over time. So from his experience, I'd say, and she listened to him and she says, "Well, welcome back to Iowa." And he started having tears roll down his face. No one had ever told him he was welcome in Iowa, to come back to Iowa. So be sure you're welcoming them, because that's a last name. And he said, she says, "Come back again." Not necessarily to Manson, but come back to Iowa again. And he did. The third story was Jim Green sent me the postcard. When we were a breakfast town, we went to Decorum, which was the overnight town before we did. We had an imitation newspaper that we labeled Breakfast Roundup in Oshin. And we had a story giving some of the history of the town. For example, Dillinger supposedly camped outside of town at some point in time. And then the backside was a map showing all the places in town. When we were handing that out, one of the people said, a sixteen-year-old kid says, "Why don't you..." He says, "You're in Iowa." He says, "We haven't seen any cornbread anyplace all week." He says, "And we got all this corn, you think you'd have cornbread? I don't know that that would be a hot seller." My wife felt motivated, I got two hours of sleep that night, but she felt motivated. She stayed up until after midnight making cornmeal muffins and told me to stop by the information booth. And he stopped, he tried to throw money, my wife wouldn't take it, he left the money anyway. And Jim got an email from some people in Overland Park, Kansas, after that, talking about that. They talked about their experience of the whole thing, but they felt it was important that we do that. Jim sent me the email, not knowing that it was my wife, I just had to print off the email and show it. Those are, but there's thousands of stories like that, of us being Iowa kind. We have a reputation for that, and you have an obligation to maintain this right, to keep that alive.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing your thoughts. And I know Mike left name and number for a handful of people. Like I said, this was first time for Manson, but obviously with experienced people, people coming through and giving two cents, you can have a fantastic event. So don't be afraid if you've never hosted or haven't hosted in thirty-some odd years. There's lots of help out there. So thank you for your perspective, and we really appreciate you coming down today. And I know he's gonna collect a whole bunch of his stuff.
But go to our website, or the Facebook, or contact us if you have questions. We wanna help you. We're here, we had such a good experience because other people provided good advice to us. So all of us are more than glad to help.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, just a couple more. About a half hour, we'll definitely get down on time. Yeah, you got a question, Fredrick?
Or some of the other breakfast communities last year.
Pretty much anyone that was the first or second town would be a breakfast community. So take a look to the route. If they're first town out for sure, and if they're probably within twenty miles, they're gonna be considered a breakfast town. So Manson last year was a long one for sure.
This site representation to me was what all of you are facing. Now, they have these dangerous intersections. I picked this one up out of a ditch a week after they were gone, so I don't feel like I have to give it back to TJ. But all of you are gonna really face heavy bike traffic ahead of you. So be prepared for it.
That's a good segue. In addition to signs, we will actually mark the bike route with these bright orange signs the entire route. So the route that you turned into Scott today, we will take these signs and mark it through your town, so you don't have to mark that bike route. And they shouldn't be altered. So a bar that says, "Hey, I'd rather the traffic go to my bar," they can't take these signs. They'll put them up the night before, the day before, they'll put the signs out, and they'll go back in the morning and check them, just to make sure they're the correct way. Vehicles will follow the green signs that say "vehicles," and they'll put those up as well. And then if you are off the vehicle route to the meeting town, because sometimes it's a spoke off the vehicle route, so those are three signs that you might see out there on the road. Our people put them up and take them down as well. Any other signs? I think Mike made a real good point. One bar that had big plans, but just left out that one little detail of putting signs up. I mean, it caused them a major difference. They're a massive bar. And the one bar that was on the other side of the street, they had a lot of signs, did really well. So all those things, location, menu, don't forget those little things like signs, okay?
Some people will often come to your town the day before. They do not wanna be part of that mass crowd. They will find the restaurants and finish their town. I don't know whether their situation is they chose not to come, or they chose not to pay the fee to go, or they just don't like crowds. But one of the things I also did was, I rode the bike route myself, coming into town about three miles out of town, came back, and I picked up all the garbage. Because I wanted our town to look the best possible for coming in when I went and they left town. But day after, I did the same thing. Given the opportunity, bikers are the cleanest people in the world. I picked up more garbage from the area that the bikers weren't on than I did from the bikers.
Can't mention the amount of trash. You know, we said in advance that the parks would be cleaner after they left and when they arrived, and he said that was an accurate portrayal. So thank you for that. I just want, we're gonna mention another thing on some model towns. There's a couple slides, I think Mike did an awesome job of laying out. There's a couple of things on layouts that I think Dallas Center went really good. I'm gonna kind of glance through, they had a nice logo, theme, income expenses, typical stuff. But what I wanna do is talk about the actual route, because again, I talked about, you know, sometimes a curve will slow people down. You know, what Mike said is, it could have had people go straight through and it would have just altered the way that people came through, they would have missed the downtown. Okay, so you really do have to focus on that one spot. They could have went with Fairgrounds, or they could have went with Downtown, could have went with the park. So you really have to focus on what the best put forward is for your town. So what, someone like Dallas Center, what they did in their layout, they had all the activities, food vendors, all this kind of stuff within a couple block area. And they actually laid out and said, "Here's our food booths along this one street." So I mean, I think they did a really good job of laying out their entire town and saying, "Here's where all our food vendors are gonna be. They're gonna have entertainment in this area, they're gonna have a beer garden in this area." So a lot of the decisions are gonna be tough decisions of focusing on, where are we gonna put that location? What kind of food vendors? They had a nice little mix of food vendors, as you can see up here. This is all in that slide presentation as well. They had some inflatables, they had carnival games, they had Chicken Poop Bingo, which went over pretty good. They had two hundred and fifty dollar, if you're doing any kind of raffle like that, you do have to get a state license. But they actually had a TV show, they came and filmed, they had this Chicken Poop Bingo, if you can kind of see that. They had color wars, they had wrestling that day, which was kind of interesting, a little thing. But what a neat layout. I mean, they just had the entire, you know, both sides of the street with all their food vendors. I mean, it's just, everyone's had the same opportunity, and then they had entertainment towards the back here. So it was kind of a really neat layout for this town. Right in the middle of the street, they had a wrestling ring. And I would probably say it was twenty people deep the entire day they had wrestling there. So you can just see people out of who, that was probably the first time they did wrestling right in the middle of the street. But it was just kind of like what Mike said, be as creative as you can be. I mean, just come up with the wackiest ideas and you might be the first to do it on Rag Ride. But they had a really good showing. They made, you know, obviously, as wall-to-wall people towards the end of the day, and, you know, right in the center of a good-sized town, it was probably one of the bigger days ever on Rag Ride. But they had this TV show called Small Town Big Deal, they came in and did what they thought was gonna be a ten-minute show on Rag Ride. It turned out to be the entire thirty-minute show focused on Rag Ride. And ten of the minutes were on the town of Dallas Center. And so it was a national TV show that all of a sudden said, "Hey, we wanna do a TV show." And just because, you know, they had their ducks in a row and lots of different things going on, it became really, really the focus. So I also wanna mention, Mike had talked about what the route inspection pre-run. To give you a little idea of what that is, we are actually... To give you a little idea of what that is, we are actually taking a team of about forty people or so that are all veteran riders and plus our Rag Ride staff and a lot of people that'll work on Rag Ride. And we will actually ride the day's route. So, we'll ride Sunday's route on a Sunday, Monday on a Monday, and take an entire weekend this of your town. So, if you want us to come in and look at your layout and say, "Hey, we're gonna have the vendors here." Or, "Is this a better location?" And we'll point out just different things to you, like, "Look at where your shade is." That's gonna be an important thing. You know, your Kaibos, you might wanna move over to this location. Just little things like that. These are people that have got, some people that have been on Rag Ride for forty years, okay? So, it's a good opportunity to bounce questions off inexperienced script writers. They're also gonna see patterns that you probably, you know, you could look at your town a million times and we're gonna go into a town on a Tuesday. And we're gonna say, "Did you know it's garbage day on Tuesday? How is a garbage truck gonna come through your town and pick up garbage?" And, and you would look at that situation a million times and never once think about, "Wow, it's garbage day." I mean, just something as simple as that, on a bicycle, you realize real quick, the third time you go around a garbage truck, like, "Hey, that could be a problem right there." So, just little things like that. Or it is dairy day, you know, they always pick up, you know, certain trucks or rock trucks run on this day. So, those are the types of things. So, we have a group, the bus, we'll usually try to have a, a stop in every single town and we'll talk to you. You know, if there's places that we might stop for lunch or breakfast or anything along the way, we certainly do that. Manson did a great job. I think they use this as one of their planning tools. As, as Mike said, they had some of their nonprofits come out and do a little test run. "What do you think riders would pay for that?" I mean, those were the types of questions we heard. Is this a two dollar size versus a three dollar size? And the opinions vary. And you can tell pretty quick when you lay out all your pie and you say, "Well, we have, you know, a pie." And, and you know what? Usually apple pie goes first, but the roof bar was gone first over this one. I mean, there's a lot of like small sampling that you can find out a lot just by bouncing it off some riders. So, so the pre-ride, we do our write-ups that day too. Probably our best thread blog the entire week is the stories that we ride up the pre-ride. We have our entire team in there and we post each and every night. And we'll do a write-in. The more information you give us about what's going on in your town. And this is in June, so by then you have a pretty good idea of what's going on. We're also bringing with us a reporter from the Des Moines Register and a photographer, videographer. And they're gonna do stories about your town. They're gonna do a lot of prep stuff, but this is a good opportunity to say, "Hey, here's some things that you're gonna be looking for when you come back in fifty days from now." So, it's just a good opportunity. So, we're gonna ask you in advance if you want us to stop. You know, some people are like, "Hey, we're, we're good." Most people are like, "We would love for you to stop," you know? And even if it's having a cup of coffee or something like that, you know, we certainly wanna talk. The meeting town's for sure. We're gonna spend some time in it because we wanna look at the layout, parking, all that kinda stuff. Other opportunities, we're through the state. We, we're in, in southern Iowa every other week. We, we drive the route a lot that were through your town. I know Manson was one that called up. I think Abe called up and said, "Can you guys stop by during one of your trips?" And I think it was probably about eight o'clock at night. We were driving towards Fort Dodge. And so, we figured we'd have one or two people met us. I don't know, were you involved with that, Mike? There was like twenty-five people that met us, like, that came out of the, out of the bar and like had all these questions for us. And we spent an hour and a half there that night and just, it was a really good experience to just say, "Hey, you know, can you, can you give us some advice on this?" So, we're through your towns quite a bit. If you, if you want us to pop in, if it works, I know we've visited with a town or two already. If it works for us, we can pop in and at least give you a little bit of advice. You ultimately have to make the decision of what's best. We can certainly give you some, "Hey, you know what? Your town's a lot like this town. You might wanna talk to, you know, Mike and Manson because, you know what? They had similar back and forth, do we go park, do we go downtown? Just little things like that." So, the pre-ride, you know, here's some typical, this was a small town. Mayor came out with his, with, with two other chairs and just said, "You know what? We are gonna test market bacon wrapped sweet corn." People were like, "Oh, my gosh." That was, they sold out of that stuff. And you didn't even have to butter it because the baking degrees with bacon corn, it was like, how have we not discovered bacon wrapped sweet corn? And they just put, we wrote that little story about this bacon wrapped sweet corn. And they were like, "It was sold out before we even got into town of how much bacon wrapped sweet corn." So, it's just a little thing like that. And then, you know, all of a sudden it's like, we do a little write-up on it. I mentioned the, the ladies that were talking about handballs before. We did a write-up on one of the pre-rides. At the town of Plucker, population of one hundred, the, the grandmas of Plucker were baking handballs to put the new roof on the church. They needed ten thousand dollars to put a new roof on the church. And they sold twenty thousand handballs at three dollars a piece. And they put a new roof and new views and all that. And that's a town of one hundred people. And there was people lined up just because of one pre-ride blog. We did, we did these stories. We had pictures with the grandmothers, like, we were eating handballs and they were bigger than your fist handballs. And people were just all that day, "I can't wait to get the handballs to help the church out." And it was just that kind of mentality. Riders wanna help out. And the ladies, they had a blast and they had, you know, just, just great stories. And then we went back later and did a story when they put the, the church roof on there. And it was just a good feel-good story that people wanna do some good when they're coming on, on the ride. So, if there's some neat stories like that that you can share, it's not just, "Hey, we are serving handballs, we are serving bacon on it," whatever. If there's some stories behind it, the Boy Scouts are, you know, gonna build a new shelter. And it's in memory of, of a scout we lost a year ago. You know, stuff like that is what really gets the viewers. Just some other things, you know, putting out pie. I'm gonna give some good, good, you know, we're gonna ride through this town. See the sights, we tried to do some photo ops at the different places. This was at House Barn in Anning. And Freeja came out here and greeted us all. And that was a nice German town, so they made, no lie, sauerkraut cupcakes. And they were the, you would think the most disgusting things you've ever heard in your life. They were awesome. And they made us drink beer with them too. It was, it was, I was like, "Oh, my God, that sounds disgustingly nasty." Chocolate sauerkraut cupcakes, unbelievably good, so. So, alright, so we threw a whole lot of stuff to you. We've got time for some general questions. We're also gonna stick around if you got questions that you don't wanna ask the entire group. Any, any general questions? I, I do wanna point out that the food, the food information is in your book. She called and said she had an emergency. So, she said, "Please contact her directly." All the food inspectors are, information is in there. There's a whole packet of food information inside your book as well. But your local food inspector, definitely you need, you need to be talking to them. Okay, question here and then. Yeah, every town should've had a thumb drive. We might have one or two left, so see Scott if you, if you didn't get a thumb drive, it's one of your towns that you can get one. Scott's got a few extra. And if, if we don't get you one today, email me and I can send it to you on the drop logs. Okay, it's too big to email. Yeah, back.
As far as charging vendors, I know we've discussed earlier about nonprofit and for-profit, but what about charging different for our local vendors versus outside vendors?
Okay, the question, the question was charging vendors, nonprofit versus for-profit, in-town versus out-of-town. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you the official state answer. Okay, first of all, you can charge nonprofits different than for-profits. But the state of Iowa says you can't charge someone more that doesn't live inside your community. We don't agree with it. I think there's a lot of instances where people charge in-state tuition and out-of-state tuition. But they said it's against the commerce clause of the Constitution to charge someone more just because they're from Nebraska or something like that. So, so keep that in mind. Now, what ways to get around it, if you will, of saying, "We will, if we make a good profit, we will refund those, those locals back," okay? And that way, it's on the up and up, you're charging across the board. What the understanding is, our first profits will go back to your ten, ten booths, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, pray.
And some of the owners, we saw, attacked a different rate for food vendors than other vendors.
Okay, the question was food vendors versus other vendors. Technically, you can't charge a food vendor more or less than another vendor. You're basically selling opportunity that day, okay? So, set them all, it's technically a commercial booth fee that you're charging. You have opportunity that day. So, if you set a booth that's a twenty by twenty, it doesn't matter if they're selling air, if they're selling, you know, pop or Gatorade, you're selling that opportunity. And kinda what Mike said, I liked what he said about they had all their local vendors in the best possible position first, and then they put the outside vendors after that. That's genius. You're giving, even though you're charging the same amount, you're putting them in a better position. I would love for everyone in your town to say, "We had a banner day." If a barbecue vendor comes up from Kansas City and doesn't have a stellar day, I'm okay with it. I might have their barbecue one day, but you know what? I'd rather, you know, your church or your softball team have a really good day. So, there's ways that you can make it better for your people in your community. So, always think of the people in your community as, "These are the ones we wanna take care of the most." Okay? Good, good question so far. Other questions? Other general questions? Okay, so was this helpful today? Okay. Did it change your thinking a little bit perhaps in a few areas? Because, you know what? Take this information back and look at your town a little bit differently now. You saw some of those photos. Don't be afraid to plug that thumb drive in and say, "Wow, there's a couple photos that kinda look like our town." And imagine what that, if you haven't seen Rag Ride in a long time, imagine what that looks like.
Got a lot of them covered already.
So, make, make picture stuff.
Big percentage.
Make them get off their bike. That's your number one thing. And so, when you have riders from your community saying, "We don't wanna block the road. We don't wanna put a fire engine across it or anything like that." Make them get off your bike. I mean, I didn't even prep Mike and he said the same thing, right? Get them, get them off your bike. Take care of your locals, okay? The other thing I think Mike really had a good point of is, is that what-in factor. Really think that out. I mean, it's, it's okay to sell out. You don't think, you don't have to feed the world, okay? And if, if weather does come, it definitely change, it definitely alters it. But keep in mind this too. People are doing a seventy mile bike ride. No one rides seventy miles without stopping. People still need to eat, okay? It may be a much quicker visit. You know, the ideal thing is seventy-two degrees. The wind is in the proper direction, which is at their back pushing them in. If all those things are factoring in, they spend more time in your town, okay? But you don't wanna get into the fact that you've got all this extra food that can't be reused. Gatorade and stuff like that, you're gonna have your fairs, festivals. High school football's coming around the corner. That stuff will, will be fond of not perishables. But things that you hunt trees, you gotta have a game plan for those if the weather is bad, okay? So, so kinda keep those things in mind. Like I said, we are happy to stop in your town and visit. I talked to a few of you before. We would love to come, uh, visit with you on the pre-ride. And if you've got some of those things that we wanna do that photo op, like, "Hey, this is kinda what we're thinking." Show us that stuff because we're gonna let the riders know our, our followers on Rag Ride are cool like I say. They follow that blog and they're gonna be ready when we come through for Rag Ride, so. Okay, everyone get home safe. I know, uh, we're gonna stick around if you got other questions. See you down the hallway as well. But thank you for coming. We appreciate all you do for Rag Ride. Thank you. Thank you.